The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now being called to order. We will have invocation by Pastor Bruce Carroll. And Vice Chair Nicholson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. God our Father, we're thankful now, Lord, for this day and this time that you have given us. Thankful for life, health, and strength. Now, Lord, as we conduct business of our city, we pray now, Lord, that you would continue to bless our leaders. Lord, continue to keep us ever forever, ever forever in your path, that we pray. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please place the flag and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call Roe, please?
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Present.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Boocher.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
And Councilman Vol.
Here. Is there motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference?
Second.
And the council meetings. Been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Boocher to approve those minutes of administrative conference and last council meeting. There are no discussion, please vote. That motion passes with seven. Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests at this time?
I do. I'd like to request that Donna Curtis from Shreveport Green and Wendy Ben Scotter.
Donna Curtis?
From Shreveport Common, please come forward. She has some exciting things to present to us today.
Okay.
I'll go ahead while they're coming up and say that I had to resign from the Shreveport Green Board when I became a councilperson so there wouldn't be conflict of interest. I'm very, very involved with our environmental policies.
I know. Hate to see you leave that, but I understand. Ms. Curtis?
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, Levett. We were very fortunate, I think you want me to tell, talk about it, to have been selected as the number one affiliate in Keep America Beautiful for our population size, which was 150 to 250,000. There were four, four of these given to all the different population categories, and ours is the second to biggest. And our population category was the biggest. I've got the annual report that I'd be glad to share with you all later, but we had approximately 11,000 volunteers over the past year with about, I think it was 48,000 volunteer hours. The big thing, I think, that all of you would be interested in knowing, is that we had a cost benefit to the city of Shreveport of $10.48. So every dollar you invested in us last year, we returned tenfold and then some. We're getting excited. We're about ready to just kick off our Great American Cleanup, and I'll be in touch with all of you at that point to get your districts involved and go from there. I would like to recognize Wendy Ben Scotter, who went with us to Washington, and Wendy gave a wonderful presentation. The whole concept of the program, of the meeting, was placemaking. And so she presented the best presentation of the whole conference on Shreveport Common. And it was very exciting and wonderful, wonderful commentary and wonderful comments about it. Would you like to say something?
Well, I was honored to be invited to speak at the conference on placemaking, but it was more fun to hear how excited other communities were about the work here in Shreveport. They are really inspired by our city and the work that the city's doing with the community through the artists to really revitalize Shreveport Common. And a lot of people came up to me afterwards and said, "I want to go there. I want to see what you're doing." So I invited them to come this summer when the park opens. And thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted, when I, I'm also on the Shreveport Common Board, since it's in my district, and I wanted to have like a positive message to share with you all about how often people are participating in, as volunteers in our city to make it the best city it can be, because quite often what we hear about isn't people actually digging in and taking it upon themselves to be a part of the change. We just hear about all the things that need to change. So I wanted you to know that we're being nationally recognized for the level of participation that we have in Keep America Beautiful. And I hope that everyone will be out to do, to do the Great American Cleanup, because I know I'll be out there.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. I think that Flurry, Councilman Flurry, has a big deal over there. They have a big cleanup when they, when that comes along to, along with, in District A.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, as you know, we are in the final days of our Black History Month celebrations. And I discovered a group of young men who I wanted to come and do a skit. They are from the Canaan Home Study Program from the main, from the Mount Canaan Mission Baptist Church, where Reverend Harry Blake is the pastor. Ms. Dorothy Thompson is their coordinator, teacher. And I asked them to come, and you'll be impressed with their, their skit. It's going to be from Dr. King's last, last speech, actually, what, what he talked about. He'd been to the mountaintop. So I'm going to ask that Jamie Mays, Walter Anderson, Jamal Johnson, and Larry Jones to come forward. And I'm going to ask, who I asked to record this, to be ready. And I'm going to ask them to, to honor us with their, with their performance of Dr. King's speech, if you please, gentlemen.
Something is happening. Something is happening in our world. And you know, if I was standing at the beginning of time with the possibility of taking a kind of general and panoramic view of the whole of human history up to now, and the Almighty said to me, "Martin Luther King, which age would you like to live in?" I would move on by Greece and take my mind to Mount Olympus. And I would see Plato, Aristotle, Socrates, Euripides, and Aristophanes assembled around the Parthenon. And I would watch them around the Parthenon as they discuss the great and eternal issues of reality. But I wouldn't stop there. I would even come up to 1863 and watch a vacillating president by the name of Abraham Lincoln finally come to the conclusion that he had to sign the Emancipation Proclamation. But I wouldn't stop there. Strangely enough, I would turn to the Almighty and say, "If you allow me just to live a few more years in the second half of the 20th century, I will be happy." You want to know what's beautiful to me? To see all these ministers of the gospel. It is a marvelous picture. You know, several years ago, I was in New York City autographing the first book that I had written. And while sitting there, a Demented Black woman by the name of Azalea Curry came up to me, and the only question I heard from her was, "Are you Martin Luther King?" While looking there at writing, I said, "Yes." And the next minute, I felt something beating on my chest. And before I knew it, I had been stabbed by this Demented woman. I was rushed to Harlem Hospital. It was a dark Saturday afternoon, and the blade had gone through, and the x-rays revealed that the tip of the blade was on the edge of my artery, the main artery. And once that is pierced, you have drowned in your own blood. That's the end of you. It came out in the New York Times the next morning, that if I had sneezed, I would have died. If I had sneezed, I would have been around here in 1960, when students all over the South started sitting in at lunch counters. And I knew, as they were sitting in, they were really standing up for the best in the American dream and taking the whole nation back to those great wills of democracy, which were dug deep by the founding fathers in the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. If I had sneezed, I wouldn't be around here in 1962, when Negroes in Albany, Georgia, decided to straighten their backs up. Because when men and women decide to straighten their backs up, they're going somewhere, because men cannot ride their back unless it is bent. If I had sneezed, if I had sneezed, I would have been here in 1963, when the Black people of Birmingham, Alabama aroused the conscience of this nation and brought to being the Civil Rights Bill. If I had sneezed, I would have had these chains later that year in August to try to tell America about the dream that I had had. If I had sneezed, I would have been in Memphis to see a community running around with those brothers and sisters who were suffering. I am so happy I didn't sneeze. While I don't know what would happen now, we've got some difficult days ahead, but it really doesn't matter with me now, because I've been to the mountaintop. And I don't mind, like anybody. I would like to live a long life. Longevity has its place, but I'm not concerned about that now. I just want to do God's will, as it allowed me to go up to the mountain. And I looked over, and I seen the promised land. I may not get there with you, but I want you to know today that we, as a people, will get to the promised land. And I am happy today. I'm not worried about anything. I'm not fearing any man. My eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord.
Wasn't that powerful?
Yeah.
Very smart young man. They've been homeschooled at Mount Canaan Church, and I appreciated them. I saw them a couple of weeks ago, and I just had to have them to come down and share that with us today. So thank you, guys, for receiving them, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilwoman Fuller?
I just think it's poignant that one of his, that in 1968, they mentioned Memphis, and I just can't help but think that one of the reasons that MLK was in Memphis in 1968 was the garbage strikes.
Yes. That's true. That is it. That's why I was there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. That was wonderful. I enjoyed that. I commend those young men for, for coming up here and doing that in front of this audience. It was a great job. So moving on, I have Mr. Shane Sharkey here with Playball Shreveport. He would like to do a quick presentation about some plans that he may have for our Fairgrounds Field. So, Mr. Sharkey?
Hi. My name is Shane Sharkey. I'm from 1403 Magnolia Ridge in Bossier City, and I represent a group called Playball Shreveport. And what we want to do with Playball Shreveport is to convert Fairgrounds Field from an empty stadium into a multi-use facility to, for youth, high school, and adult sports for both college, for baseball, softball, and soccer. There we go.
All right. If possible, speak into the mic or that mic or.
This one?
Yeah, where they can hear you.
Okay. So our vision is, again, to reclaim the stadium, to make it a multipurpose stadium. So not just for the purpose of having sports in the facility, but we want to be able to reach the youth in our community and have, have an environment to where we can do that in a positive way. To give you an option, just a quick draft as far as where the stadium is right now and being able to convert it to a multi-use stadium, we want to turf the facility. We're going to be able to see the existing outline of the facility being for the existing footprint for high school and college baseball. We're going to be able to use it for softball by having a removable mound and being able to bring in fencing. And also, you see where we're going to be able to use it for an NCAA regulation-sized soccer field, but we also be able to accommodate lacrosse as well. We had the pleasure of an opportunity to do three different assessments of the stadium. The first thing that we wanted to do is assess the current envi- environmental situation. We were blessed to have Jones Environmental come and send their crew, just to kind of determine where we were currently with the facility. The next thing that we did was we contacted United Bat Control. They're, they're a national company, and we had them come in and evaluate the current situation of the bats. There's about 30,000 colony bats, there's about 30,000 bats in the current colony there. And so we had to find a company that could handle that problem. So we had them come in to assess what it would take to do the extraction of the bats, do the cleanup, and also take care of the histoplasmosis bacteria, fungus, and be able to decontaminate the facility as well. So we were able to get the bid for that as well. And next thing we did with a friend of mine, Sam, we went in. Sam's a supervising contractor for a major company here in town, and we determined what the structure of the facility is. We know that the facility is structurally sound and that we'll be able to, had a good footprint in order to build upon. This, one of the next things that we had to be concerned about is if the bathrooms were ADA compliant, and we know what we have to do with those facilities there. At one time, the city had issued a bond program for $300,000 in order to make Fairgrounds Field ADA compliant with those restrooms. I'm not sure if those, that money is still available, but that's kind of the current situation we are with, with the exceeding capacity. What we've done with Playball Shreveport is we want to create a grassroots community in support of this effort. So right now, we have over 1,300 people as part of Playball Shreveport community. We, we have an online petition in order to encourage you, the city council, and the mayor in order to sign a long-term lease with Playball Shreveport. As of right now, we're at over 3,600 people who have signed the petition, so we're able to get a strong grassroots support for that, for that effort. Another thing that we did was reach out to local organizations in the community, and we were able to reach out to the YMCA, FCA, different colleges, different athletic directors, and different people in the community who, who are all in support of having this facility restored and be able to have it, bring it back to life and be able to use it for the betterment of our community. As far as a funding source, we're going to structure Playball Shreveport as a nonprofit, both for the, for the reconstruction of the stadium, but also for the run operations and daily operations of the stadium. We're going to do the restoration funding four different ways. One is through the individual fundraisers, and that's what you see as part of that grassroots campaign to build up Playball Shreveport. Playball Shreveport isn't one person or just a board of directors. It's the whole community within this region who want to see something positive happen with Fairgrounds Field. So we have those individual people who are willing to step forward and support. We've actually had to ask them not to make any donations at this time until we're able to accomplish a long-term lease with the, with the city and allow us to restore that facility. We've also had major corporations in our area who want to make donations and also to advertise in the facility. We are going to be also raising money, selling advertisement and placement advertising within the facility, and then also, we're going to be able to apply for grants through our nonprofit status. Every time that I've run into an obstacle, or Playball Shreveport has been able to run into an obstacle, God has placed a person into our pathway in order to, to solve that issue for us, whether it's the inspection of the stadium, or whether it's making sure that the lighting capacity or building up the revenue that we need to be able to restore the stadium. We've always had the right people God placed in our, in our pathway. So what I want to appeal to you today for is this. If we were playing a baseball game, Mayor Perkins, you'd be the coach. Playball Shreveport, we're your team. But right now, we're in the dugout, and we just want to get on the field, and we want to play, not just for the sake of just having baseball in the stadium, but just like those young men that were here, we have a purpose and a mission that we want to have for the young people in our community. We want to be able to use that stadium to reach out and have positive Christian men and women reaching to the lives of these kids who are in this neighborhood and to the surrounding areas of Shreveport who have been economically locked out of baseball. But more importantly, those kids are going to homes to, going back home after school to empty homes. Maybe their parents are both working, struggling to make ends meet. They may be going back to, like, going into a home in which they're struggling with alcohol and drug abuse, and they don't have anybody pouring life into them and speaking positive things into them. And that's what the true purpose of this stadium can be. It's just not a baseball stadium. Restoring a baseball stadium, that's the easy part. Using that stadium as a unifying factor within Shreveport, that's the fun part, because while everybody passes down an interstate, just like I did one day, and they see a rundown baseball stadium, I see something that can bring our community back together. And that's going to, that stadium right there, Fairgrounds Field, that's the catalyst for other positive change in this community. Each one of you ran for office because you wanted to do something positive in this community for the people who live here in Shreveport. That's why you ran for office. That's why you sacrificed your time and effort. And this is an opportunity that you have to have a positive impact on our community and just stand behind us and let us take the field and let us restore that stadium. The thing for us right now, we've been through this process, it started last March, last March, and we're almost here a year later, because we had to learn what we needed to do. We had to be able to come in front of you as an organization that can handle the reconstruction of Fairgrounds Field, and we're confident that we can do it. Our board of directors is loaded down with talented men and women. Some of them top contractors or environmentalists in our area. We have people who are part of the media and social media and people who are already experiencing raising money through nonprofit grants. So we've assimilated a team over time. God has truly blessed us in being able to form an organization that can handle the reconstruction of that stadium. We have men and women here today supporting us, Coach Spence and Ron Fenwick and Jordan, Jordan over there, Jordan Ring, who are standing behind this organization, because we believe in Shreveport. We believe that how Shreveport goes, the region goes, and it could be a truly a positive draw for our community. So what we just need is, we need to know, Mayor Perkins and council, where do we go from here? Who do we need to speak to? Who do, who can we meet with in order to sit down and work out a long-term lease so that we can go to work for you? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman.
Mr. Sharkey, can I call you back? I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, sir.
I've got many fond memories of sitting behind home plate and watching the captains growing up as a child with my father and my siblings, and I would love to see Fairgrounds Field restored. I think I hear you saying that you are putting together a nonprofit that will do this with private dollars. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate asking the city to fund this restoration, or you just need a lease from us?
No, sir. We just need a lease. I mean, the city has limited resources right now, and those need to be focused on infrastructure, roads, police department, garbage pickup, whatever, whatever those issues need to be. We're, we're going to be able to raise the money and be able to restore the stadium without tapping into those funds. The only thing I mentioned before, as far as, there was a special bond issue about, I think, eight to 10 years ago, that was specifically for the purpose of making the bathrooms at Fairgrounds Field ADA compliant. It was a very specific bond, and if those funds are, weren't redistributed, reallocated, we would like those funds to be used for the stadium. If they've already been reallocated, that's no problem. We'll just plow forward, and we'll restore the stadium with private money.
What do you anticipate the investment will be?
Between five and seven million. And we're really not, the thing that we're not sure about is because it's not really safe to go back into the stadium just because of the bats and the histoplasmosis. So there's things that we're not sure about as far as the current condition of the electrical and the plumbing from whenever the stadium was just padlocked up and walked away. But I was able to, every time, man, me and Bishop Brandon were having breakfast the other morning, and by the way, he sends his kindness regards to you. We were having breakfast, and he, we say hello to somebody in passing, and I was like, "Who's that?" He said, "Oh, that's the guy in charge of SWEPCO." I'm like, "That's the guy I need to speak to." And then he kind of tells us, Mr. Carbin, and Mr. Carbin says, "Hey, you need to be talking to Mr. Campbell, because Mr. Campbell has grant money available to refit stadiums and public buildings with LED lighting." I'm like, "That's what we need." So that's what I'm saying. All along the way, God's just been really blessing and bringing the right people to us at the right time. And now's the time for us to really get started, because, if you don't mind me digressing real quick, so the bats have started migrating into the area early. I've learned so much about bats. You'd be amazed. But, so the bats are migrating back early. They're going to start their mating season, and from the time they start the mating season, which is typically the first of April, that stadium cannot be touched till basically the end of July. So that gives us a lot of opportunity to really do a lot of assessment and be able to work a working agreement with the city, because, you know, we want to be able to work together to make this thing happen.
Well, if your offer to the city is you're going to invest five to seven million dollars in private funds to restore this stadium, that sounds fairly attractive to me, and I hope we'll pursue that opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Just, Councilman Boocher?
Mr. Sharkey, thank you for coming. I, I think that this is exactly what we did run on, is building public-private partnerships such as this. It is an eyesore every time you go down I-20. It's almost like a waste of a resource for Shreveport. And what kind of timeframe are you looking at to get this stadium back up and running? And do you foresee possibly having NCAA tournaments there that could bring tourism and visitors into Shreveport? Do you see that happening?
Yes, sir. Timeframe that we're looking at, again, because we just have to get past the cleanup. We're looking at a projected time period of a year and a half to two years. We've already had Southland Conference contacted, well, not contacted me. So Kelly Wells with the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission has been a huge help, and he's just been really proactive, because he needs a large feature stadium venue in order to bring other events to the area, because he's kind of limited on the size of tournaments that he can bring into the area and those sort of things. So he's already been approached by Southland Conference when the softball, he's been approached by, he had an opportunity to talk with SWAC Commissioner. They're willing to play their SWAC championship tournament here in Shreveport. There's also now the private schools. LHSAA has said that the private schools have to compete separately in the playoffs, and quite frankly, they're tired of going down to Lake Charles. Lake Charles is a great community, sulfur, but, you know, they're looking for an alternative venue, and Shreveport can be that, because when you look at Fairgrounds Field coupled with Centenary College and LSUS and ETBU, now you're looking at being, being able to bring some major events to the area. Plus, whenever Cargill has a tournament, they can plug the championship games and some of those feature games into Fairgrounds Field. My son's played baseball since he's four. He still plays baseball at Centenary College. And believe me, playing travel ball and going all around the South, you're playing a lot of little stadiums, but everybody looks forward to playing in that big stadium.
Well, I think, I think it's a win-win for us. I would like to see the administration push forward with this if we can and possibly try to come up with a lease. I'm assuming if, if we leased it, then you would take all responsibility of that building as far as keeping it up, and the lease would have to have some, some, I would say, parameters set in it to where the stadium's maintained to a certain level, starting from whenever you take the lease over.
Oh, yes, sir. And also requirements as far as, we want you to be able to see progress, and we want to be in close contact with you, letting you know every step of the way, where we're at along the journey of getting that stadium restored. And, you know, we want to be able to be very transparent with the public, because it's their stadium, right? It's, it's, the citizens of Shreveport Stadium, so we want to be able to let everybody know where that's going. And that's where, assembling the people on our board of directors, one person being a prominent media person, another person being very apt at social media and building up our community of support, we're going to be able to communicate the, our progress with the stadium.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Fairgrounds Field is in my district, and I.
Yes, sir.
I spoke to Shelley Regal about getting together with some kind of group to have a meeting to see where we can go forward with doing something over at Fairgrounds Field. So I'll make sure we get this information and try to get in contact with your senior, see what, see what ideas you have.
Yes, sir.
That, well, that you presented, and present those to her and the rest of the people in, in that group setting, to see what we can go forward from.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's a dire need, and it needs to be revamped, if that makes sense. So I appreciate you and your, your, your open heartness to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is Council lady, was she on the building?
No, she's on this.
I just went back in.
Okay.
I just want to say I do appreciate the idea that this would be privately funded and that you're already looking at diversity of programming, but if, so y'all are in the dugout, though?
Yes, sir.
And he's the coach? I want to be Mary Carey singing at the seventh inning stretch.
You can do that.
Okay.
You can sing the National Anthem at the first game.
Nobody wants that to happen. No. I just get the seventh inning stretch. All right. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sharkey. Thank you.
That I understand, the bat situation, what, what?
Okay, then I understand, the bat situation, what, what was your, uh, position or take on that? You said they're, they're migrating back in, so if, if they're not there, is it a way you can, uh, you can sort of, uh, uh, put some barriers around this so they can't come back in?
Yes, sir. See, Fairgrounds Field is kinda built like Lego blocks, you know, kinda assembled together, which makes, has a lot of parts that are joined together, and it provides like an ideal habitat for bats. And, um, so what they would do is, the company, United Bat Control, whenever the bats fly out at night-
Yeah.
-what they would do is they start sealing off those sections, uh, that the bats are coming in at. And then after they get the parts sealed off, eventually the bats won't be able to come in anymore, and then they'd be able to proceed on with the cleanup and the decontamination of the stadium. But one of the things that we want to do is we wanna provide some alternative habitat for the bats.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, bats serve a great purpose. I hate going to a ballgame and be, having mosquitoes and, and bugs all around me. Bats consume a lot of insects and they do a lot of benefit in that area, so we're gonna erect bats, bat houses around the perimeter, be able to provide them some alternative habitat.
Okay. Well, certainly appear that you've, uh, in your group have thought this through, and, uh, and I concur with the councilman and the council lady, that whatever provisions that need to be made so that you can move forward in an expeditious way, we will support that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Um, Councilman Green, and before Ms. Councilman Green speaks, I wanna remind everyone, if you have a request to speak for them, please turn it in ASAP, because we did try to stick to the guidelines, and that's have your request forms in at the beginning of the meeting. So if anyone else has any, uh, bring them up now, we won't be accepting anymore after the fact. Okay, thank you. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to, um, I'd like to recognize, um, a legend in our midst today, Mr. Attorney Charles Grubbs. I'd like to just welcome him to the meeting, and good to see each other.
Alright, I was cattle clerk. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Grubbs.
Mr. Charles Grubbs, Attorney Charles Grubbs, he's right over there.
I knew he was, I knew it was, I thought he walked up to the front, I didn't say, I know he's short, but I ain't saying. Alright, um, is that Nicholson?
Yep, not sure.
Okay. Let me change some of this out here, y'all didn't fill my screen up. The cattle clerk was here, but he left. Am I correct, he did leave?
Mike Spencer.
Mike Spencer was here, and I just wanted to recognize him. Uh, any other council member have anything they have at this time? Seeing none, Mayor Perkins.
Yes, um, well, first of all, I wanna, uh, recognize our sanitation workers that we have here. Y'all wanna stand up? I've already come down to tell you how proud I am and how much I appreciate the work that y'all are doing, so you, you know that. Uh, I wanna thank also SPAR, Public Works overall, Shreveport Police Department, uh, Shreveport Fire Department, and all the city employees that have contributed to this Mardi Gras season thus far. Our Mardi Gras season does not roll without the full commitment of our employees, uh, from everything from setting up to cleaning up, you name it. So, uh, very proud of them. Uh, each year we gladly support these activities, uh, that add a quality of life characteristic to our community, so I'm very, very grateful for the, for our employees. Uh, the second thing I wanna do is I wanna invite the council, uh, to celebrate the accomplishments of those who put their lives, uh, on the line for our, the city of Shreveport. Next week, uh, we have two events. Uh, the first is the Shreveport Police Department will hold its annual awards banquet on Tuesday, March 5th, uh, at the Northwest Louisiana Technical College, located at 2010 North Market. Doors will open at 6:00 PM. Uh, the second event is the Shreveport Fires Department, Fire Department's annual awards banquet that will be held on Thursday, March 7th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, uh, also at Northwest Louisiana Technical College. Um, we will have, we would love to have you all come out and, uh, support both of our uniformed servants. Lastly, I have to step out at 6:30, so if I step out towards the end of this meeting, not sure how long it's gonna go, uh, but I have to step out at 6:30 to go to, uh, give a speech at an African-American, uh, month program at university where they're dedicating the auditorium to, um, Lilian mothership, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's right. I hope we don't have to be at a 6:30, Mr. Chair.
Please don't let us be here till 6:30.
I was looking at Councilman Bradford as I said.
That's what I said, I hope we don't be at a 6:30.
We hope, we hope the same, Councilman Bradford. On those, okay, on those bankers, I wanna make sure, 'cause some of us were off on a time, it's for, at 6:00 PM, at both?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the Police Department's banquet is at 6:00 PM on the 5th, on Tuesday, and the Fire Department's banquet is on Thursday at 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Alright. Um, at this time, well, Mayor, do you have any other communications, um, at this time? I know that yesterday, there was a young lady here, and I didn't wanna make her stay, uh, as I did yesterday. Um, and that, that was, and I take the, the credit for that. So if, if it's okay with the council members, uh, to bring her up at this time to present herself?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Roan?
And, and Chairman, it's up to you the order and what you wanna do, but it was two names, uh, of, um, Ms. Roan and also the, uh, and also Sherica as well, so, I don't know if you wanna, 'cause she'll be here, she's not going anywhere. So I don't know if you wanna wait to the end, or you wanna knock out the, uh, question-
Let's do it now. Let's do it now. Alright, Ms. Roan, would you state your name and, and, uh, the position that you are being confirmed for?
Of course. I'm Chairdith Roan, and I'm being confirmed for, uh, SPAR's Division Manager of Administration. And first, I would like to say thank you to Mayor Perkins and his executive staff, as well as to all members of the City Council. It's an honor to be here today, and thank you all so much for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, why are you and the mayor always picking on me? Anyway. Ms. Roan, thank you, uh, for, uh, presenting yourself for service to the city of Shreveport. Give us a little bit, uh, about yourself, just-
Yes, sir. Well, I'm a recent graduate of Centenary College, uh, got my bachelor's degree in, uh, business management and finance, and a minor in economics. I went on to obtain my finance certificate from Harvard Business School, and I recently graduated from Tulane University with my master's degree in business management with the specialization in energy finance.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Uh, in regards to, in regards to, well, I have to, I have to be transparent and say, I know that distinguished star basketball player at Centenary, Mr. Cherokee Roan, but you're in the audience, sir. So-
(applause)
So her, her, her pedigree is, is great. In regards to the position that you've been, uh, recommended for, um, have you, are you familiar with your responsibilities?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with, uh, being able to carry them out?
Yes, sir, I am. I had a meeting with, uh, our director, Shelley Regal, uh, about a week ago, and we discussed my responsibilities, which includes managing the budget, as well as being over payroll, human resources, marketing, and the technology department. And I have the educational knowledge coupled with my internship experience to exceed your expectations and add value to the city of Shreveport and the Department of SPAR.
Well, thank you again. I appreciate that, and I, uh-
Thank you.
Again, have, have, um, it's for me with your family, you, and I wholeheartedly, uh, would support you in this endeavor. I think you'll do a great job for the city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Green.
Thank you. I'd just like to say congratulations and-
Thank you.
-tell my brother Pete I said hello.
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you.
Alright, Councilwoman Fuller.
I'm just saying that I, I also know your dad, but I think that your, your credentials and resume stand on their own-
Thank you.
And I had a wonderful conversation, we met yesterday, and I kinda grilled her for a good forty-five minutes, and I found her to be very impressive. Um, she, um, has done research about not just the actual, well, she knows the position, but she's done research about the, the strengths and weaknesses of what she sees throughout that department, and I think that she'll be prepared to do a really good job.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Roan.
I also wanna say that it was really impressive that she reached out so that she could, uh, meet with all of us to make her case for herself. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Councilman Boot.
Ms. Roan, I, um, I apologize that I have not gotten back with you to meet with you yet. Uh, I was talking to Councilwoman Fuller about this today, and, uh, your resume speaks for itself.
Thank you.
It, it does me good to see somebody that graduated from a local college to come back and want to be part of city government, and that you're willing to give with, uh, with all of your, uh, all your acolytes and your degrees, that you're willing to come back and serve for. So, um, I'm impressed, and, um, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to be home.
Thank you. Uh, I had some conversation with Ms. Roan, and I can just say that, um, again, your resume speaks for itself, and this is just another way of, uh, showing that we have, uh, I'm sure your parents are proud, uh, but the fact that we have people who are willing and committed to staying home instead of going somewhere to seek other opportunities, I really appreciate that, and, uh, wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Okay. If that's it, then, uh, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Who, who was the other?
Sherica.
Ms. Sherica Jones?
Yep, just the other appointment, right beside me.
Wait, what's that name again?
Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we're familiar with, uh, Mrs. Jones, you've been employed with the city for how long now?
Almost seven years.
Seven years, and you was, uh, the Assistant CEO.
Correct, for most of that time.
Okay. And just, um, and I have something, I have some, some, some information in front of me, but just give us briefly, uh, some of your background and accomplishments.
Sure. Um, well, born and raised here in Shreveport, um, love the city of Shreveport, went to Huntington High School, uh, graduated there, didn't wanna leave home, uh, went to Centenary College and majored in finance, uh, with a minor in economics. Um, I also, at the same time that I was there, um, did an extra year to, to be able to also get a business administration degree. Um, from that point, I've worked in different areas of finance throughout the industry. I started on the mortgage lending side. Um, I did that for about a year. Um, from there, I worked with an investment bank, and I worked with municipalities all over the country, um, working either as financial advisor or underwriter to their bond debt. And overall, I've probably worked with issuances of about six hundred million dollars, um, in bond issuances throughout the country. And from there, I went to work for the airport, I worked as the manager of administration and, um, in finance, and I did that for about ten months before I was summoned to City Hall, and worked as the Assistant Chief Administrative Officer since then, primarily, primarily working with, um, you know, the administration, with the budget and different fiscal matters, um, that were relevant to the city. And then, in December, um, I was, you know, tasked by the former mayor to help step into the role, um, of, and the duties of the Chief Administrative Officer, um, and then recently was appointed as the interim CIO.
I mean, certainly, uh, you've done an, uh, exceptional job in your capacity as assistants, as well as working with the financial apparatus of the city. I've always used, used this as a, as a cliche when, uh, persons of, of, of oversight of department heads come into play, and that is, I look for you to keep the, keep the train running, okay? The mayor gonna be out speaking, but the, but the train, the city train services has to continue. Again, I think, I think you'll be the first female that would be offered this position, is that right?
I'm not sure.
No?
Judy Ferguson.
Judy?
Ferguson.
Oh, yeah, yeah, back in the day, okay. I'm going back several years. Back in the day, that's what we used it for our time, right? But, uh, how do you, how do you, how do you see yourself as, uh, as the authoritative figure over the, over the various department in there, and, and, and supervising them and making sure that, that the train keep running?
Sure. I've, I've had the privilege of working with the department heads already for the past almost seven years, with working with the budget. Um, and I have started already, I've had one-on-one meetings with them, and of course, you know, we're also looking to the transition white paper that will come from the mayor's transition committee. I'm going forward, what I'm, I'm looking forward to do with the department heads is to take a really deep assessment of the challenges and, and the most challenging challenges that they have, and helping them to dig in, working with the mayor, working with the council to, to address those issues. Um, I've been in a position where I've been able to kind of get my feet wet and to be aware of those things, you know, from the surface, um, having those conversations with them. Um, I'm, I'm excited, I'm looking forward to, with the, with the opportunity, um, to be able to not, of course, you know, micromanage them or, you know, but to be a partner. We have some very bright department heads that are, are brilliant. They've got, um, a, a, a lot of ideas, and they're excited about digging in, getting to work. They wanna do a good job, and I wanna be a support to them in that endeavors.
But once again, I, I have no question regarding your, your experience and, and understanding the, the operational aspects of, of that position. You've been there for seven years. But I have one final question I, I was gonna ask. Early on, uh, it was reported that our reserve fund was not adequate. You being a part of that, uh, of that structuring of, of our last city, city budget, did that, did that issue was, did it come to light within your, within, within administration? I mean, I know we talked about it in, in the budget hearings, but was you as, as alarmed that it was not at a proper level, and did you express that to, to your former, your former, uh, superior?
The, the issue of the reserve has been on my radar since before I started working with the city, because I had spent so much time studying the city's finances and working with the rating agencies, um, regarding the city's finances. And the finance person in me, it makes very conservative estimates, and when I make those recommendations, I make them very conservatively. Um, I feel that now going forward, I would be in a position to actually implement those, um, and again, to work with the mayor and the council to the, potentially, hopefully, um, as soon as possible remedy that concern.
Okay. So my final question is, what do you, what do you see yourself doing differently now that you will be the CEO?
I think that, more importantly, my, my initial goal is to work with the department heads and seeing how we can sharpen our pencil. Um, we have been, you know, running, uh, a deficit as far as the budget is concerned, and I think one of our challenges is going to be looking at the services that we provide, taking a deeper dive into the revenues that we have right now, um, and making sure that we are being prudent with our, on both sides, um, collecting efficiently, um, looking at potentially streamlining, and of course, going through the budget process and making sure that the council is on board and that we're able to, to collaborate.
So you're saying that lines of communications you feel will be more accessible?
Yeah, I, I believe that, that these bodies between the executive and the legislative branch, that we need to work together, um, very closely to make sure that, you know, our different ideas about the way that we can serve the citizens, that we're moving in the same direction.
Okay. Well, once again, I, I applaud the mayor for, for, for recommending you, and you have my full support. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Flur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I must acknowledge that I'm a very proud United Methodist, uh, after seeing what our college, Centenary College has produced here. Uh, congratulations to you, Ms. Roan, and to the mayor for these two fine choices. Ms. Jones, I, I can only say that I have so much pride today seeing you being nominated for this. I have so much pride today seeing you being nominated for this. You've always been open and transparent and you've always returned phone calls. And I am so proud that you are here today. Mayor had a sweat a little bit, but he made the right choice. And I want to congratulate you and I wish you the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Flurrie. Councilwoman Fuller.
I just want to acknowledge my own personal Centenary College bias. And I've had some overlap at Centenary with Sharika, so I'm super, super excited. That's all. Congratulations.
All right. Councilman Green.
Okay, I'd just like to say congratulations and God bless.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Fuller?
Oh, go ahead, sir.
It was a mistake?
Yeah.
All right. I could say a lot, but I'm not dealing with and being around Sharika for, from Fields to Jones. I can only say and concur to what was said at first and that's, I appreciate the work you've done. I think you've been through three. This is your third mayor.
Yes, sir.
And I know it's tough sometimes. It could be tough because you've always been kind of like in the back, in the background. Coming out forefront, I think it was, I had a discussion with a couple of my colleagues and we were like, well, can Sharika, you know, come out and will she be able to, you know, take care of this? Or will she be able to handle some of the department heads, which we know that some of them will buck the system if they can, but because they are so passionate about the job that they do. And we agreed yes and thought that you could do that. So I just want to go along with them and applaud and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson.
Ms. Jones, I don't know you as well as some of the other members of the council who have been here for several years, but I certainly have appreciated all your efforts helping us come onboard the council and all the work that you have done with me on the sanitation fee and other issues that we've had to deal with. I would like to understand, and this is not directed to Ms. Jones, but I would like to understand what process the mayor followed in terms of a selection committee or a search for a chief administrative officer and how we came to the conclusion that Ms. Jones was the right person for the job.
Yeah, we've been using the, our website, Future of Shreveport, to solicit applications. We've held probably half a dozen actual in-person interviews for the position and, you know, including Sharika, as a matter of fact. She was one of the first I actually interviewed in the process. And she shined in her interview. She shined over the 50-plus days that I've worked with her. And she stood out above everyone else as the strongest candidate. And that's exactly what I was looking for.
Ms. Jones, the position of Chief Administrative Officer is absolutely critical to the success of our city. And I know that you have deep experience with the city and I wish you every success in that position. I will encourage you, as I know you have, to, in the past, to take the reins of the position fully and do what needs to be done for the citizens. Your position will require you to make many hard choices and, well, you'll have decisions to make that you'll have to answer to, only to God and yourself for in some cases. And so I wish you well in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Boach.
Ms. Jones, I, the only thing, like most of the people up here, I don't know you that well, since we've only been here for a few months. But I was very impressed with the first time I met you. I came to a budget work session, I think it was myself and Councilwoman Fuller, back when nobody even knew who we were. We came and listened. And I was impressed with your, with your knowledge about the budget. The few times that I've asked you questions, you almost seemed to be able to recite it in your sleep, probably, as far as numbers. And I'm impressed by that. I believe that you stepping up and taking the place during the former administration when the former CIO left and you being so schooled on the budget was impressive. I do want to see us work together to try to shave some off this budget. And I think that you want to do that. I think that you're willing to do that. And I think you're willing to work with the council and the mayor. So I'm glad that the mayor made this choice and I support your position. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think that was it. In other words, Mayor Perkins or from Ms. Jones? Anything else? That's it?
I just, well, I do want to just say thank you to the mayor for the confidence that he's, you know, put in me. This is a position that I don't take lightly. And I thank the council for also your confidence and I look forward to it.
Okay. And these two confirmations will come up on, what's the date?
Next week, next council.
Next council meeting, March.
We have one other.
As a third?
Herman Hill.
There's one other appointment.
Yep, Superintendent, yep, Superintendent of Phil Dopp.
I did see that name.
Water and Sewer. Is Herman Hill, is he present?
Okay.
He's not present today, but we can get him by the end of the meeting if we want to just push it to the.
We can get him at the work session on the eleventh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do that. All right. Thank you. Mr. Green, property standards. I want to have anything for Mr. Green. Did you have something?
No.
Okay. Let me say this. I did have a, we had a property standards meeting today. And during that meeting, it was brought up that Mr. Green actually also was forthcoming and stating that from now on, at the meetings, it'll be great if he can come up and we can take care of him the one time that he comes up instead of us just having to model up to the front and then head back to his seat. So I have no problem with that if that's okay with the rest of the council.
Say it again, Mr. Chairman.
So that he will be able to, like when we call him up now?
Yeah.
If we have something that's towards property standards or whatever, we can get it at that time instead of waiting till later on in the end of the meeting. So he's eager to get back to work, from my understanding.
Oh, you mean a property standard appeal? He wants to do it early on?
Yes.
Well, we would.
Okay.
You, we would need to change the agenda to do that.
We can change that.
And the rules.
Let's work out, let's work it.
We can work that out. I'd be glad to do that. I'm in favor of doing so. I hate to have him here through the whole meeting, so.
Well, let's work out to the gallows.
We can work that out.
Come later.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Okay.
Mr. Terrance Green.
Thanks for clearing that, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Mr. Clark, did you have, Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark, Mr. Allen Clark. Master Plan Committee Report.
Mr. Chair, Mayor, Council, if you're considering changing things, then I would like to come up early and get through with mine and leave also. I wouldn't like for you to do preferential treatment to another department over us. But on a serious note, we finally got the master plan subcommittee together. We have representatives from the city council, representatives from the Cattle Parish Commission, and representatives from the MPC Board. We're real excited because we have some wisdom on the subcommittee. We have some new energetic, exciting persons coming to this subcommittee. We plan to review and analyze the master plan. It's sort of gotten kind of back in the, with us beginning to settle on it and we don't want that to happen. We want to review the master plan, want to see where we come, make plans to complete the recommendations of the master plan and going forward with planning Shreveport Cattle Parish to be the city in the parish that we really wanted to be. With all the excitement that we've had here today, it makes me extremely exciting, looking at the young people, looking at, at the baseball field that I watched and I watched it deteriorate and watched it, we lost the professional, semi-professional team that we had. That was so exciting. So seeing these things happen again makes us excited in the planning arena. And we plan to bring exciting reports to you going forward from this day.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. We should all have received a budget to actual finish report from Ms. Jones. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today? We have the following request to speak.
Malik Stewart.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Stewart, just state your name and your address, please, and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, Malik Stewart, P.O. Box 3800, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7133. What else do you need?
Just a second.
Okay, thank you. I'm here to bring out as a point about the recycle cans that the customers are renting or leasing from the city. In addition, there is a collection supposed to be recycling. And it seems like we're being, it's double dipping in that the cans are being leased to the customers, plus they're supposed to be recycling. Now, after several months or maybe a couple of years and stuff, it seems like we've met the obligation of purchasing those cans. And I have a difficulty trying to understand if you're also recycling, which I understand there may be some problems with that, why don't we get the proceeds or how do the proceeds offset some of the expense of leasing these cans? Can anyone tell me what the annual amount is taken in from the leasing of the blue recycling cans?
Those are purchased by the city.
Sir, I think what Ms. Jones is saying is, we don't lease the cans. The citizens, the city owns those cans. We charge a $2.50 a month recycling fee on the water bill, but it's not a lease of the blue cans.
But if you're charging a fee and then recycling things, doesn't recycling offset the price of the leasing of the cans or however you, whatever terminology? But do you understand what I'm saying? Like, okay, for instance, if you gave me your aluminum cans and then I went out and recycled them, then I would be bringing in income. So would anybody like to offer that? We could offset that amount by whatever comes in from the recycling?
Well, I don't want to take any more of your three minutes than you want to give me, but I will say that one concern that I've expressed previously concerning the recycling program that other council members have expressed is that we don't presently have an agreement with Pratt, which is the recycling facility that receives the contents of the blue cans, that requires them to report to us what they do with the materials they take in, or requires them to share with us any of the revenue that they receive from selling recyclables. So there is no offsetting income from that activity.
Wouldn't someone be interested in looking into that on behalf of the citizens?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay. And it seems like that we could be able to benefit in some capacity since the, it seems like it's in perpetuity that we lease or whatever you call it. It's a fee, which is basically a tax for these particular cans. And that's the point I'd like to bring to the committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Felicia Scroggen.
How y'all doing today? I wanted to speak on Resolution 24.
If you would, your name and address, please, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Felicia Scroggen, it's 9314, Sanderwood Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7118. Some of you may know me from being up here speaking on the exact same thing that the resolution is on. And I'm just asking y'all, I want y'all to know that this causes stress, which causes depression, which causes you to lack on your job, slack on your job, lack on your job. And that's not good for what we do. But the stress that it puts upon us, it could cause those problems. And it's been going on for several years. Of course, y'all know it's, I've been coming since probably 15 or 16, 2015, 16. So it's well over five years that this been going on and we've been trying to get somebody to look into it. So I'm just asking if all of y'all will vote yes, so that we can get an investigation going on, that y'all can look into this to see if y'all think the same thing, that's how we feel. We losing a lot of people. The morale is down on the job. And it was at a point when I first came on, you thinking, I get paid to do this? They actually pay me to do this. Now you saying, this all I get paid to do this? So there's a problem. So again, I ask if you all will vote yes for us. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Attorney Strange.
Councilmembers, the city attorney's office would like to advise the council members today to not comment on the allegations and have discussion in council today regarding Resolution 24.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Flurrie, thank you, Ms. Ma'am.
Ms. Ren, how are we supposed to respond to the legislation?
I believe that Councilmember Bradford may be wanting to postpone. The city attorney's office would like to look at the resolution, which is authorized under the city charter. But there's also the firefighter's bill of rights to take into account, and then there's also civil service law. And so to coincide and look at all of those together, it would probably be prudent if the council postponed the resolution for a later date.
Okay, my question is, how do I, as a legislator, respond to someone today who walks up to me and says, that's what I'm asking, how do I respond?
Yes, sir. The city attorney's office would recommend that you not respond today.
Thank you. That's what I'm asking.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Flurrie. Thank you, Attorney Strange.
Anthony Young.
Good afternoon, how y'all doing?
Hello.
All right, my name is Anthony Young. I live at 3445 Jackson Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71109. And I'm here to speak.
Speak into my.
Speak into the microphone for me.
Yeah, pull it to you.
There you go. Now, you can state it again, I'm sorry.
My name is Anthony Young. I live at 3445 Jackson Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71109. And I'm here to speak about solid waste. And I'd first like to speak about the conditions that we work in, the heat, the cold, the rain. And we just want fairness. You know, the drivers, they start out 1260 an hour. Over in Bowser, they start, their drivers off of $16, $17 an hour. The helpers, they start out at $13. The helpers in Shreveport start out at 1067. And not only the trash cans we have to pick up, we have to pick up extra debris from furniture, you name it, it's out there, we have to pick it up. And here it is, 2019, and we're making 1980 wages. I want to speak about safety. Our job is dangerous. You know, we have to get chased by wild pit bulls. How you say, we had a coworker a week or two ago, right here in Queensborough where I'm from, got robbed at gunpoint. He's no longer with us. You know, he got, wherever he went, he's not with us no more. And the average citizen couldn't do the job that we do. They would tap out before 10 o'clock. You know, it's a very, very hard, hard job. And I would like to challenge, you know, just saying, you know, city council member to come do a ride along with us to see what we go through on a daily basis. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Michael Williams.
Good evening, Michael Williams, 2101 Carver Place, the great city of Shreveport, Louisiana, to our honorable chairman and to our distinguished mayor and to this great administration. I rise again, as I said on last week, that we are in a position for greatness. And unfortunately, there are times that people at the bottom, their voices are not being heard about their opportunity. I just heard this young man speak. If you want to stimulate and grow the economy and make this one of the greatest cities in America, we got to recognize and take care of our own people. The men and women, they pay taxes, they provide jobs for their family, they shop in our grocery store, our mall, they go to church with us. We need to recognize who they are. These are the people that work for us. And we know that the Shreveport Fire and Police, I was a firefighter for ten, several years, 10 years in Shreveport. And we know they have a union. They have a union we can recognize and have collective bargaining agreements where they can negotiate for their salaries. I mean, they may be, they may be organized, but they're not recognized. I hope that what's been said today and throughout this entire tenure for the last several months, been debating and dialogue about a particular issue, that the senses of the mind of the people that are sitting in this room that ultimately make those decision on the behalf of the people of Shreveport. And we have to recognize where we at in this, in America and where we in this city. We pray, we say the pledge of allegiance, but when it comes down for equality and income equality and justice, it seem like we have deaf ears on the eyes of the poor and the people at the bottom. Their voices are not being heard. That's why they elected you to be their voice, to speak up for them, to recognize the importance of team working and working together and working from the bottom and being inclusive. We want to be a city of inclusion, got to recognize the people at the bottom, the poor, the lost, the deprived. It's not about economic, it's not about race or sex. It's about, let's work together for a change in this city. We have one of the greatest opportunities to do that and we can do it from this day forward now. As we see, build as usual, it's no longer acceptable in Shreveport. There's a mandate for change, from the bottom to the top. Most of you are new and we got a new dynamic administration, a new mayor. There was a mandate for change. We need to change the direction. We need to change where people can feel the change in our community, not just lip service, partial for the cameras and the media, when it sounds good, when it feel good. I've been in your shoes before. I prayed that you would do what's right for a change in this city. And I know my season, the discrimination, the lies of the world, not only in Shreveport, but in America. We need to bring that to the forces. Whenever we talk about economic equalities, we find out whose side we are. Let's draw a line in the fish from this day forward and let's pour together, let's be our brothers keeper and remember these men and women of the blue that serve and. be our brothers' keeper, and many of these men and women in the blue that serve, they also serve to, they're public servants, and vote your conscience and let your conscience be your guide. Thank you and God bless you.
Ernest Small.
Okay, first I want to say that we asked.
State your name and address.
Ernest Small, 3123 Exposition Avenue, Eric Coles, 71109, Shreveport, Louisiana. So, we, I asked, we asked out of Tyler not to have a runoff. She says, no, I'm gonna do it, I almost won. We say, you dipped, I almost win. She said, well, I'm gonna have a runoff. So, we flooded the voting booth, she won one-third of the votes, then she knew she was out of there, she could have left with grace. She refused to leave with grace. So, now, I'm saying to you guys, do not hold my water hoses for my pension. Do not, we done told you, we didn't want to take ten dollars, we done want you to take zero out of our check. If you're gonna take some water, a bill for us, take the city tax, we paying out the homes. It's designed for senior citizen homeowners. We do not want you to take money out of our check. This our picture, these our golden years. We're a senior citizen. Find another way, take it out the tax on our, when we pay city tax. And thank you, you have a good day.
Thank you, Ernest Small.
Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I come today with a request from a few people as of yesterday and today. They found out that there would be probably a seven-dollar fee for the trash collection, and they were very concerned about this. They have been kind of questioning about the seven, but said in quote, if only that it could be a compromise to five dollars, they would more than happy to agree that five dollars would be worth it. Five or even the one-cent sales tax, because that's all that they're asking for, and that's not really too much to ask for, because they knew that eighteen was not something that they could handle. I asked if they had a petition, and if they did, I'd be glad to bring it here to present it. Guess who forgot the petition? They did. So, since they forgot the petition, I was more than happy to come and speak on their behalf. Not that I don't mind at all. If this request would not mean anything to any of you, it would to them just for five dollars or a one-cent sales tax, and they wouldn't be asking too much. I would have been glad to present the petition, but since they forgot it, well, that's just something that happens, but if that could be done, they'd want other things just as well, even if they were desperate to get them. Thank you.
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. First, want to talk about this sanitation issue, because now we're at a point of renegotiation from the eighteen-dollar fee. There's been a lot of misinformation put out. The eighteen-dollar fee that was voted down, less than a dollar was, we want to go to sanitation, so we need to make that very clear. Again, I've been advocating for sanitation workers since 1997. I'm in favor of a pay raise for them, as well as water department employees, as well as other classified workers. However, I challenge this council, because I can tell you from statistical analysis that I've done on this budget for the past twenty years, you have millions of dollars that are being squandered and wasted on professional services contracts, and also outdated and overlapping programs. You cannot come into a city and start raising taxes when you haven't even looked at the budget. And Mayor Perkins has indicated, and I'll tell you this, Mayor Perkins, I don't accept any, any type of analysis that has come from the Tyler administration. There needs to be another audit of every department in this city, because I'm telling you right now, a couple hundred million dollars are being squandered on professional services contract that should not be. This budget is inflated, and their increases should easily be taken care of from that. But with that, those funds need to be dedicated to a specific fund for sanitation and sanitation only, not the police department or not the fire department. They get an annual increase every year, and they need to be cool with that. Also, these funds need to be dedicated to specific equipment for these particular workers that would make their jobs better. Now pivoting to the insurance issue, Councilman Nicholson, I'm glad that you mentioned yesterday the, the fact that it takes a long time to do these insurance analysis. So, the handling of this insurance contract was done completely wrong, and we need to get to the bottom of that. Whoever made that happen, I'm sorry, they need to be terminated, because we're talking about millions of dollars at this stage in the ballgame. And lastly, since 1996, I have advocated alone with Councilman Bradford for economic parity for black businesses in this city. We didn't fight for the fair share contract program for businesses in New Orleans, Dallas, or any other city. We fought for that for black businesses in Shreveport. So, we're not here to improve anybody else's tax base, but our own. So, anytime we have a contract, it needs to be merged with qualified people here. Leon Wheeler and Associates is a great insurance financial services firm, and they should be partnership with Gallagher, and we'll have a good deal. Thank you.
All right. I did have both to speak. So, we have those executive departments. Mr. Thompson, let's continue with items to be adopted.
On the consent agenda, we have one item. It's Resolution 23, so a motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Boucher and second by Councilman Green, number 23. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 13 on the regular agenda authorizes use of certain equipment by sports spectrum race management in the Red River Cities Triathlon.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote.
I'm sorry, Councilman Flurry.
My button didn't, I meant to push it there, not pushing. My question on this sports spectrum, the tax worksheet has this, I believe, twenty-two, about eighty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five, twenty-two road crossing barricades that put up, and I'm just wondering, did we add, I could be wrong, but do we have any fire department people that are going to be standing by on that race? I just want to be sure we capture all of our costs.
I can, I can get that number to you. Our director right now isn't here today, because we didn't talk about it much in work session yesterday, so I'll get you that number.
Well, it's not necessary. I just, I just wondered if we had, you know, because we were showing our cost of what actually we've been out.
And we, and I would say in most con, in most of the contracts that I've reviewed, I want to say all of them, the cost of fire and police officers are calculated in those contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Any city resource, even barricades that we own is calculated in the contract.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If there's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 14 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Ascena Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Fuller. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 15 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the Department of the Air Force, Barksdale Air Force.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Boucher and second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 16 authorizes the use of certain equipment by Shreveport Green for the Great American Cleanup.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fuller and second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven.
Resolution 17 authorizes use of certain equipment by Mount Olive Baptist Church.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 18 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Boucher. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Resolution 19 also authorizes the use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Boucher. If there's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 20 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Historic South Howland's Neighborhood Association.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fuller and second by Councilman Flurry. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Had to get it in there quick, before Mr. Green got in there.
That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 21 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Southern Heels Homeowners Association.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Flurry and second by Councilman Boucher. If there's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven.
Resolution 22 authorizes the use of certain equipment by sports spectrum race management.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Boucher and second by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Y'all going fast. We got to get out here before six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
We're making up for that.
Motion carries with seven.
For all that long wind.
Resolution 24 would launch a city council investigation.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, at the advice of the, of the City Attorney Office, I'm going to ask that this be postponed. And in my, in my quest to move forward with this, I, there were several issues that I didn't, that wasn't considered. When I, when I saw in the charter where it says this, this body has the authority and jurisdiction to investigate all departments of the city, I didn't consider either a state stature, I didn't, I didn't consider civil service law.
Civil service.
And I didn't consider the firefighter bill of rights, which, if these issues or these items seem to conflict with, with this body's ability to do as the, as the charter says, so, so, so the City Attorney's Office is going to help me weed out this, and I think, given a postponement, I can, I can be accurate and prudent in, in offering, in offering my, my legislation. So, I move that this be postponed until March the 12th.
I second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Flurry to postpone number 24 to March 12th. If there's no other discussion, please vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Boucher.
I just want to, for all parties involved, I don't want it to drag out. That's the only thing I'm going to say, and I think that's okay, right?
Yes.
I would like for it to move as, as quickly as possible for all parties, the administration, the, the fire department, and for the firefighters involved. We need to move prudently with this, where they can get back to the business of taking care of the city. Thank you.
All right, I agree. Please vote. That motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Green.
Mr. Chair, just in case he has to leave, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Lewis Johnson, who's present with us today.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to March the 12th. Resolution 25 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with KTBS LLC. Resolution 26 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Pinpoint E-Bets LLC. Resolution 27 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Bojangles Sports Commission, and Resolution 28 authorizes Buckner Truck Sales Inc. at Greenwood Road and Rice Road to make a connection to the City of Shreveport's water system.
All right. Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
The motion by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Green to introduce those resolutions. If there's no discussion on that, please vote.
No vote necessary on introduction of ordinances.
That's the next one.
Just on 25, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Chairman, we're now into introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to March the 12th. Ordinance 19 amends the City of Shreveport's 2019 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 20 authorizes the City of Shreveport, amends the City of Shreveport's general fund budget. Ordinance 21 amends the 2019 budget for the Grant Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 22 amends the 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 23 amends and reenacts portions of chapters 26, 74, and 94 of the Code of Ordnances relative to solid waste collection fee. Ordinance number 24 is a zoning matter, zoning case number C-9-19. It rezones property located on the east side of Marshall Street between Fourth Street and Franklin Street from IMU Industrial Mixed Use District to I-2 Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance 25 is a zoning matter, case number C-10-19. It rezones property located on the southwest corner of Jewella Avenue and Murvan Street from I-2 Heavy Industrial District to C-4 Heavy Commercial District.
Okay. Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make this statement in regard to ordinance 23, even though today I will be voting for introduction, by no way does this mean that I'm supporting passage of this at the next vote. I believe in all my heart that there's a better way, and when we began the conversation of this, we had constructed this in another direction, coupled with the seven-dollar fee with a timeline on it, and then we were going to work to get a sales tax, and that has since changed, which I need further time to review and, and to decide, but I think Councilman Green deserves to have it introduced today, but in my heart, I believe there is a better way and to move forward on this matter. So, I just make that for a matter of the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Flurry. Councilman Boucher.
I agree with Councilman Flurry. I believe that, that there's still a little bit of work to be done on this. I do think that we have a two-week period that we can push this forward, but I don't want my vote to push this forward for two weeks to be any indication that I am for this or against this at this point. Councilman Green and I have been in conversations, and I believe that the premise of what he's trying to do is, is good, but we still have a lot of work to do before we get to that point. I would like to restate this, that, you know, I see a lot of things on the media and a lot of things on social media about this, this garbage fee, a lot is, or clean city fee. I see a lot that, that may not be known. I could tell you right now that this council is not making deals to get to thirteen dollars. I don't think anybody up here right now has any inclination where this is going. I think that what we're doing right now is doing what we were elected to do and listen to everything that we can and try to get the city on better footing. The city is in trouble. The insurance issue that we were talking about, if we were to be sued over that for some reason, we only had three-point. be sued over that for some reason, we only had three-point-one million dollars in reserve. And that is scary to me as a taxpayer and a citizen of Shreveport and owning a business at Shreveport. So I just ask for everybody to bear with us that there's no backdoor dealings going on with this council right now. We're trying to do the best we can do with what we've been provided with. I would like to see a more comprehensive plan, which includes raises for our solid waste. I appreciate the guys that are sitting out there right now, that I watch you pick up. I appreciate it. I applaud what you do. You deserve a raise. You deserve a raise. And I just feel like we've got to get, just because the mayor wants to go, just because he wants to go down I-twenty to Mendon, I may want to go down Highway eighty. Doesn't mean we're going to get to Saint, we're not going to get to Mendon. So that's kind of the direction that I'm taking, and I want everybody to be patient with us. I said this before, we've only been here a month and twenty-some-odd days?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six days? Thank you, counting down. And we're working to do the best that we can do with what we've got. I appreciate all the emails, all the phone calls, and don't think that what you're sending me is not appreciated or listened to. So again, I want to try to get some type of comprehensive plan together to take care of our sanitation workers, our water department, our fire and police. I believe that they do deserve a raise to get competitive with Bojor City. But we're going to have to have a plan together to get there. And I appreciate Reverend Green, Councilman Green, he's at least working on this. And like he said yesterday, what was it, we're going inch and step or something. We're going to get there though. So I appreciate him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Boocher. Councilman Green.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say, thank all of you for working with me. Every day, I see the solid waste folk helping our city, keeping it clean. Every day, they do a top-of-the-line job every day. The reason I think that we need to do something, and I know we may have a bigger plan, but as I said yesterday, by the inches of cinch, by the yard, it's not hard. Sometimes we have to take baby steps. The initial part was to take care of solid waste. The next part is, yes, our reserve is low. We didn't create it. It's going to take some time to get it up to where it is. But I think that the longer we postpone this, it's like they have their hand in the lion's mouth. They out there working in the cold. We don't have to go out there. They working in the hot sun. We don't have to go out there. So we say to them, and we keep saying to them, okay, we're going to get there with y'all, but we just got to wait a little while. That's just like pouring water on me, telling me it's raining, when I know it's not raining. So this has to start somewhere. It's better to start somewhere than to just say, okay, well, we cool, but we got to make sure we do this and we do that. I just think we ought to start where we stand, to put our money where our mouth is, and say to these ladies and gentlemen, that we're really serious about y'all. We know that there are some other people, but you all have an emergency to get paid and to get paid now, versus saying, well, we got to look down the road. You know, you save stuff for a rainy day. What if it doesn't rain? So I just think that we got to get something on the table. At least we have something. And we do have another piece, and hopefully that other piece will fall in place that will fix that piece. But we got to do something. And I'd just like, again, take my hat off to you all, for you all keep coming up to the meeting to say, okay, what we going to do today? Well, we ain't going to do it today. We're not going to do it this week. We're going to do it next week. I applaud you all for having the strength to come up here and look us in the eye every week, and then go back home with nothing. But I'm going to be praying, and I'm going to be caucusing, asking my colleagues to let's do something, at least do something, and then we will do the rest when the rest come. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Councilman Nicholson.
I appreciate all the hard work Councilman Green and my colleagues on the council have done on this issue. As I have said several times from this seat and will continue to say, the city is in very poor financial condition. You've all heard the statistic that we have a one percent operating reserve. You've heard that we have a pension fund that is severely distressed. I had a meeting this afternoon in which I was advised that the cost of the consent decree work that we are doing on the city's water and sewer system, in which we have an obligation to do, is projected to cost hundreds of millions of dollars more than the initial estimate. The initial estimate was that that work would cost three-hundred-fifty million dollars. We've spent, I've been told, four-hundred-twenty-five million dollars, and only done about forty percent of the work. So the cost of that work is likely to exceed seven-hundred million dollars. Solving the city's very serious financial problems is going to require a combination of cost-cutting and control and additional revenue. There is no other way out of the situation that we're in. And anybody who, in the media or in the social media peanut gallery who tells you otherwise is trying to sell you something. We're going to have to increase revenues. We're going to have to control costs. A sanitation fee for a service that we provide is a responsible first step. I don't know where the number will end up, but I will support sanitation fee in connection with a solid waste enterprise fund. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Bradford, go after you, sir.
Okay, you yielding the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I agree with everything has been said. This is a challenge, but we are up to the challenge. Now, what I really would like to, to know, Mr. Mayor, and it doesn't state it in the, in the fact sheet, if, where it states that if this passes, and y'all, we know we don't have to move for it, introduction is automatically introduced according to the City Attorney. If we, if on the twelfth we move on this, and the seven dollars would be added to, to the residence bill, and it's the desire of the motion maker, the legislative maker, is that this would be applied immediately to sanitation employee raises. When, timeline-wise, when, how could that happen?
You said, how could that happen?
I'm saying, give me a process of when, and when that could be, and how would you go about determining raise increases?
So we could implement the raise increases immediately. As you said, there's money allocated for a year in Public Works budget, so that money can start paying the workers immediately. And then the money that we start to collect from whatever enterprise fund amount or whatever general fund amount you pass, we can put that in to replace that gap, to make up the gap of the increase.
I mean, because early in the year, and Ms. Jones, you projected that a seven-dollar fee would generate how much by the end of the year?
About five-point-five million.
Five-point-five million?
That's on an annual basis.
Again, I think, I think we got two weeks to, to really, to scrutinize how we can move forward. I don't think this is the end. I think it could be the beginning, and I think we can add another layer, inch, if we go forward with this. I'm not, I'm not sure. I wanted to, I wanted to do something that would be more holistic. But at the same time, I understand the frustration that's in this room as well, as with some of us, but we want to be prudent in our, in our decision-making here today. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we need to move to, to introduce it. I think it's automatically introduced. Thank you, sir.
City Attorney's attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, the council rules of procedure state that the council would need, there would need to be a motion and a second. And upon a motion and a second, then ordinances are introduced at that moment. So a vote would not be required.
Okay.
Should I move with introduction?
Well, I'm still going to speak.
Oh, you got to go? Okay.
You know, a couple of, maybe a couple of weeks ago, maybe four, a month ago, I'd say, three weeks ago, I was questioned about why did I vote for the initial eighteen-dollar fee. Okay, eighteen-dollar fee, we pretty much knew which direction that was going to go in, because I think all of us up here thought that that was a lot to put on the backs of the citizens out the gate to start on. So, and I made that statement to the media and up here aloud. Now, my reason for voting for the eighteen dollars was to say that I have been with the sanitation workers for some years now, even before the fact that I was on the council. I've been standing strong with them all the while. So that's my reason for voting for the eighteen-dollar fee, just to show them that I'm standing solidarity with them, and I do believe that they do deserve the raise that they are looking for and the raise that they deserve. So that was my reason for voting that time. Okay. Thank you. And, and, and I still will visit and continue to visit and try to rally for them to get a higher than seven-dollar fee for us to pay. That's me. And I feel that, and that's strictly from Jared Bowman, no one else up here, no one I hadn't been discussing with anyone, trying to make a backdoor deal as far as what was said earlier. I just do believe and will steadily rally for them to get what's due. I don't think five-point-five will get us to where we need to be. I think we need to try to fund the whole eight-point-six, eight-point-five million of what it is now and some. So my purpose for voting, again, I want to make sure I put that on record. My purpose for voting, again, was to show the sanitation workers that I stand with you all, as I always have, and I don't, if I say something, I stick by my word. Okay? I've been told something, some things different, some things of negatives have been said about me. I don't believe everything that goes on Facebook, but some stuff on Facebook has been said, has been brought to my attention. I want everyone to know I am who I am, and I will continue to be who I am, and I'm standing with those guys in the trenches. Thank you. Councilman Green.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Jones, for the, give the sanitation workers a raise, would it cost more than five million dollars? Would we have to give that whole five million dollars to them, or could we give them a suitable raise coming out of that five million dollars?
Correct. It would be a portion of it.
Ma'am?
It would be a portion of it.
I'm just saying, if we had five more million dollars a year, with what we are proposing to do for them, could they get a raise out of five million dollars? Or do we plan to give them a raise that would exceed more than five million dollars a year?
Yeah, Councilman, to answer your question directly, yes, we could pay them. We could give them their raise with the five million dollars that's passed this year. As you know, another portion of that five million is going towards us stopping the supplementation of our sanitation. So to answer your question more directly, yes.
Thank you. And here again, Mr. Chair, I was looking at, the issue at hand is to putting them, number one, putting them on top of the ballot to say, this is what we need to do first, is to make sure that they have a suitable raise. And then once they have a suitable raise, whatever is left, then we'll do part two, and then sometime in the future, we'll do the rest of it. But they need a raise like last year, year before last, whenever they've been needing a raise, and they just, we just been kicking the can down the road. So that was my objective, is to do what we set out to do. Now, some other stuff could be added, but my priority is to take care of them. And I'd just like to say, just for the record, I would be glad to ride on the truck, but I have to ride inside because I got a side nerve.
All right. Councilman Boocher?
Mayor and Ms. Jones, there's all kinds of things, like, like we were talking about, I think Councilman Nicholson called it the peanut gallery, but that's floated around in reference to how much of this fee is actually going to go. And I just want to kind of elaborate on what Councilman Green said. Do we have a total dollar amount to give our sanitation workers a raise? Do we have a total dollar amount of that that could be publicly said?
Sure. It's like right under four-hundred thousand.
Okay.
And that would be an annual cost.
Okay, so four-hundred thousand, and then we need to have a little bit in there for inflation and things to go along?
Sure.
Okay. So we're looking at four-hundred thousand dollars. Then the other question is on the recycling. Where are we on that contract with the recycling? The gentleman that came up and spoke earlier about the two dollars and fifty cents that we're being charged, where are we as far as that contract goes? What are y'all's plans with recycling in the city? What are y'all planning on doing with that?
So right now, we already have a meeting scheduled to talk, to speak with Pratt. I've been working with the City Attorney's Office and reviewing that contract. I won't say the likelihood on whether or not, you know, it'll be terminated or amended until I have that meeting, and we meet just so we can do our due diligence. But right now, the City Attorney's Office is balancing quite a bit. So, but we have not forgotten about it. It's still on the agenda. We'll be knocking out that meeting this week, and we'll give feedback to the council afterwards.
I think you and I definitely agree on this. I have a huge problem with Pratt sending that, that waste or sludge or whatever they want to call it to DeSota Parish and not to our landfill. I am for immediately, as quickly as we can, and I'm not trying to rush you. But for this all to play in, this two dollars and fifty cents needs to be revisited, because I believe that really, you know, if you have sixty-six thousand households at two dollars and fifty cents, that would pretty much fund a raise for several workers in Shreveport. And if we're not getting our bang for our buck, we need to possibly, one thing that's been brought up to me in several meetings is possibly having some dumpster sites similar to the parish, maybe going in, I don't know where, where the Commissioner Louis Johnson went, but going in with the parish and maybe putting some dumpster sites and some recycling sites somewhere inside the city. That would be a two-fold thing. If you have a pickup truck, you may want to take your couch to the dumpster as opposed to waiting for these guys to have to load it up and pick it up, and more work for them. So if we could maybe look at the cost of maybe working with the parish to maybe bring some solid waste stations into Shreveport, and that would be a quick for our recycling. If people really want to recycle, they could take them to these drop-off spots and then work with the parish to have dump sites that might alleviate some of our large bulk pickup, where they can get their job done a little bit easier. So I mean, that's just an idea to look at.
And Councilman, I agree with you. We've been doing, you know, this homework alongside the other things. And I'll tell you, you've already touched on a lot of big components of it. Our landfill is a big portion of it. We receive revenue from our landfill. We're looking into ordinances that we be bringing to council on how we could possibly do some measures to enforce that our trash is dumped into our landfill. Also, there's the contract and the wording of the contract. Never in my administration would I have agreed to approve a contract like that and say that we have a true recycling program in the city. So again, and the citizens have also been reaching out to me to have a true recycling program. So we're looking at every viable option that's affordable for our community and that we can, we can take on right now. So that is not in the review whatsoever. We're going to be going forward and knocking some of that out.
And in full transparency, this is something we've talked about and we've, we've been in communications about. I want to see us really work in a timely effort to try to get this, because I think it all falls into what Councilman Green's wanting to do. Everybody I talk to in my district is not necessarily opposed to paying for trash pickup or a clean city fee. What they're opposed to is they think that we're just asking for more money without getting our fiscal house in order. And I believe that it's a step-by-step process. And the biggest step right now is we're losing money at the landfill. That's number one. And number two, we're losing money with, with the recycling, in my opinion. So I would just like to see, and I think you're doing it, so, but I just want to go on the record where everybody in the media, social media knows that this is not something that we're taking lightly, that we are trying to get the fiscal house in order. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Boocher. Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, allow me to yield to Councilman Nicholson. I'm still thinking about this.
Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the mayor's efforts on the recycling issue. I have received numerous phone calls and emails about this issue. I want to make clear that I am not opposed to recycling. I support recycling. My nine-year-old daughter reminded me at supper the other night how, what a good thing recycling was. I think she had heard that I was trying to get us out of that business, and I assured her that I was not. But it's important that we have an agreement with our recycler that makes sure that we are actually recycling what we're telling our citizens that we are. I did invite a representative of Pratt to attend this meeting this afternoon and was told that one was not available today. I'm glad to hear that Pratt has scheduled a meeting with Mayor Perkins and his staff, and I look forward to hearing the results of that conversation. I'm glad to hear that Pratt has scheduled a meeting with Mayor Perkins and his staff, and I look forward to hearing the results of that conversation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Nicholson. Councilman Bradford?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, let me be clear in, in saying this, that I don't consider what has happened over the last several years to kicking the can down the road. I don't subscribe to that at all. What I, what I, what I, what I believe is that this city, and we may have made some mistakes in not doing some prerequisites. And that, and I think Mr. Lee and Councilman Nicholson have said that we, we need to do some prerequisites. We need to look at our budget, cost savings, uh, whatever cuts that are available, we need to, we need to do it. I think it would, it would be unwise to do a whole lot of things before we, before we, before we move in that direction as well. Now, piecemealing, and that's what we're talking about, is one thing. And I'm not totally opposed to it or not, but this is what I wanted to say. I, I, I manage, I'm in healthcare. And, uh, and I see a lot of people come in with different, different conditions. Couple of years ago, there was a, there was an incident at a clinic that I managed on the Cooper Road. A guy was in his backyard and he was cleaning some debris and some logs and he ran up on a beehive. And, and, and he got stung all over his body. And he, 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 he put his some clothes on, on his, some pants on, he had some short pants on. He, so he put his, he put his, he put some pants on, he rushed down to the clinic for the doctor to, to address his, his stings. And, uh, and the doctor started off by just treating the bee stings that was visible from his neck up. And that's sort of akin to what we, we'll be doing. And, and, and unless we created the prerequisite that we're going to say we need to do this, this, and this, and then get to a point that we can treat the whole body. We need to, we need to go from the neck down as well. Because two years ago, when Matt Tyler wanted to set a minimum wage of ten, ten sixty, sixty-five, you know, I mean, we did that. And prior to that, uh, a lot of people hadn't gotten raises, but still, we, we still, you know, on a ten-year cycle where it appears to, no raises for sitting employees has occurred. I want to, I want to get to a point to where we can treat the whole body. And, uh, and I think to, to do that, we have to identify what's, what's adequate and equated. And, and I think Mr. Lee is right. I think we, I think we, we got properties, we got, we got facilities that, that are just there. And we, and, and we are, we are having to keep them up, expending funds that necessary, unnecessary. Some of these, some of these legal and other costs that we're outsourcing and people just collecting a paycheck. I mean, all that needs to be addressed and, and we need to be, be sort of accurate in what we're saying when we say this is the ability of this city. And I'm saying, when, 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 when my wife wanted a new car, I, I wasn't kicking her, kicking it down the road, kicking the can down the road when I said, babe, we can't afford a new car right now until we address some of the, uh, some of the costs and expenditures that we had. But we got to a point where she could have bought a, she, you know, I bought her a new car. And I'm saying, I'm saying that, that, that living within our means is what, is what, is what I think our objective should be. Let's do what we can do, and if we can do better, we'll do better, but let's do what we can do. And, and, and it would be un, un, unwise, I think, to us, for us to, uh, I mean, I'm not saying piecemealing is wrong, but I'm just saying, I want to know by whatever means that we can know what is the ability of this city. You heard what, what was said two weeks ago by the, by the, by the United Way staff on where we are on, within the poverty area. Fifty-six percent of the citizens of Shreveport live on or below the poverty level. That cannot be dismissed. We can't, we cannot dismiss that. But at the same time, we have to determine what is our ability and what is the, what is the future of how we would, how would we operate within the, within the constraints that we, that we have coming in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Councilwoman Fuller.
We can't maneuver holistically if we're gonna keep everyone in the public confused about what's going on with the money. And right now, based on like the number that we need for the raise, which is part of what we want the money for. And the other part of it is to basically keep ourselves from drowning. So, Mr. Lee was right earlier, and he said that we were using a very small percentage of this money to pay for these raises. Now, the truth is that we're trying to remove this money. We're trying to get enough money so that we are alleviating the rest of our entire budget to cover the entire cost of the actual Department of Solid Waste, not just paying for this raise. Now, if we're going to have that conversation, that's going to be more phone calls back from the public saying, do we want to just fund this raise? Or do we want to go ahead and get ourselves out of trouble on the back of this department and on the back of this water bill? Right?
Right.
Okay. I want to make sure that that is what is really clear here for talking about being holistic. And that also means that we probably need to be getting some issues together on a ballot so that people can actually choose what they want. And I don't, I, I'm frustrated about that because it means that we are going to be pushing this a little longer and it's going to take longer for people to get where they want to get. And I would like to see a raise happen immediately for these workers, especially after like the painstaking conversations we've been having about it. We do need to have more transparency about what's going on, not with Pratt, because that's not who we have the contract with. We have it with Republic because Pratt said, we want to raise the price of it. So, we said, cool, we're going with Republic until they decide they want to do the same thing in 2020 unless we decide to sever ties with them. Right? Our conversation might need to be with Pratt, but it also has to be with Republic. So, we've got a lot of relationships and then we're not even talking about what if happens if we take recycling away immediately. How much more waste is going to be encumbered by the gentleman that we're trying to give a raise to? And how much more that is going into our landfill that is not being offset by the revenue we've lost from the other partners we had in the landfill? Right?
Yeah.
Can we put all of that back on the table together?
Yeah.
So that you can see the whole buffet that we're talking about right now. We also need to think about how much litter is produced just by our uncaring public. I mean, I said awesome earlier about all of the volunteer hours we have at Shreveport Green. That's like once a year. That's like when you get together with your family for Christmas, right?
Right.
That's not enough to keep us clean all the time. The undue burden on these gentlemen when we don't actually utilize our cans right. And we don't have any accountability for all of those things. We've got more problems that we need to talk about. I don't want to sound like the sky is falling, but we've got more issues that we need to think about. And we need a real thinking public coming forward with their issues and their solutions so that we can get where we need to get. Because the phone calls I'm getting are starting to say, well, maybe I could afford to pay a little bit, but they're still saying, what's going on with my water bill? I've got two four hundred dollar water bills that I need to talk about right now with Ms. Beatherton. Because, not for me, but from my public, because they're saying, they didn't work. I didn't do it. My water bill's normally fifty dollars, except it used to be twenty-five dollars. Right? So, these are all the issues that we've got to deal with. We can talk about this piecemeal business, but I need to hear an actual solution right now. Do y'all want to stick with the seven dollars, which does not give us enough money to, to create an enterprise fund so that we have the transparency to say, all the money we're taking in is going where we said it was going to go? Right? So, that's one piece of it. Or do you want to just do like a little one dollar, two dollars right now to give the raise and then come back and talk about it later? Or put together something on a ballot? Because that's what you've got right now. And at the same time, we're still drowning because our reserve is low, which is the thing we didn't get into overnight, but we still need to deal with. So, are we all clear? All right. That's it.
I agree with Councilwoman Fuller. She a hundred percent right on, on, on the statement she just made. Uh, but I did want to say that as I, I looked at, up some more, uh, on the Alice Report. And we, while we are harping that Shreveport is fifty-three percent?
This parish is fifty-three, the city is fifty-six.
Okay. And we also have Wynn Parish that's at, uh, fifty-six. And we have Webster that's at fifty-five. Natchitoches that's at four, uh, I'm sorry, at fifty-nine. And Clayburn Parish at sixty-one. Benville is at fifty-one. And Bossier's at fifty-five. I'm sorry, forty-five. Public, yes. So, um, and at the same rate, uh, those same parishes, cities are paying, uh, Mendham pays seventeen dollars. Spring Hill is small, is probably not as big as this room, but it pays twelve. Sibley pays sixty-seven dollars every three months. Okay? And Bossier pays round about thirty bucks a month, if I'm not mistaken. It's twenty-seven, I know, but I have two employees that work for me that are paying twenty-six. And someone, someone told me they pay thirty, but I think it's twenty-six dollars a month that they pay. My, 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 my deal is on that is I do believe that we, we need to pay a fee. I mean, I, I always hear people say that we go to other cities. I traveled to Dallas, or I, I, I went out of town this weekend and it was so clean there. When I got back across the line, oh, you can tell you was back in Shreveport, trash was here, trash was. I hear that all the time. I think that this, uh, clean seat, uh, clean city fee will take care of some of that. Uh, but we should also hold, and I, and I do have to say, because I do that work myself, we have to hold our employees accountable also. As far as making sure that they do a tremendous job when they go out to, uh, our citizens and the household. So, I just want to say that a little bit there. Councilman Booch.
Real quick, um, Chairman, I, I agree with you that, that these other cities are paying these fees. However, if you want to look at apples to apples, Bossier City pays twenty-three point three mills in property taxes. We pay thirty-three point three. Is that right, Ms. Jones, somewhere close to that?
That's correct on what we pay.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's almost a ten-mill difference. Um, so, really, it's not apples to apples. But I agree with you that there needs to be, um, that we're going to have to do something. And, and I would like to go with, uh, with Councilwoman Fuller's, um, philosophy that it's, it's, it's a little bit more complex and that we're going to have to, everything that I'm hearing from everybody is, hey, we don't mind paying this fee, but we want to make sure that our spending's under control, that we've looked at the budget. And then the other half is saying, I would rather vote on it. Let's come up with a sales tax or a bond or something like that. So, uh, not that I disagree with what you said about the fees, but I think we need to put the whole picture in place that, you know, we're at thirty-three point three mills and Bossier's at twenty-three mills. So, that's almost a ten-mill difference. So, you know, it's cost equal out. I, 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 we'd have to do a comparison of that, but I'm not sure it's apples to apples. Thank you.
I went to Lafayette the weekend and they were at, they paid twenty-two dollars a month.
Who's that?
Lafayette.
What are their mills at?
And it's, uh, I would check back with the councilman. Uh, I'm supposed to meet with him, uh, on Thursday, so I will get those numbers from him and I'll make sure I get them.
Well, a perfect example, and I'm curious as to how this works. Whenever this all started, I had Ms. White do some research for me of several southern cities, uh, similar to us, like Jackson, Mississippi, uh, Mobile, Alabama. Mobile, Alabama is like, was it seventeen mills? Was that? Ah, you probably don't remember. But it was, it was extremely low and they had no trash fee. So, that's a similar-sized city with similar demographics, similar poverty level. I don't know how they can do it and we're not able to, so.
You got to remember, we got a landfill. A lot of these people don't have a landfill.
Right. Right.
They probably got some reserves too.
Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd just also like to add that it would be unfair to the people we're talking about giving a raise and then we take back half of what we give them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Councilwoman Fuller.
Mayor and, um, and Ms. Jones, with the last time we visited this, you said that if we weren't able to come up with something, it would mean cuts. Um, where would we be cutting first? Is it going, would it be attrition of jobs or what?
We, we have not done that analysis. We'll wait until this concludes before we go through that exercise. But, um, again, to get our reserves healthy, uh, we would, it, raises are off the table. Let's just put it that way. To get our reserves healthy, raises for our employees would be off the table. So, uh, we'll wait to do that exercise after, uh, we figure out what exactly the budget will look like for fiscal year twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, if there's nothing else on that, then is there a motion to introduce these ordinances?
Some of.
Second.
The move by Vice Chair, second by Councilman Green.
No vote, Mr. Sir.
Mr. Thompson, would you please proceed with ordinances on second reading and final pass?
Uh, ordinance seventy-nine was, has been postponed until March the twenty-sixth. Uh, ordinance seventeen amends portions of chapter twenty-six, article five, division ten of the code relative to the creation and establishment of a solid waste enterprise fund.
Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I think it would be appropriate for the council to consider my solid waste enterprise fund ordinance on the same day on which it considers the fee that we may or may not impose. And so, for that reason, I move to postpone this ordinance two weeks.
Okay. Councilman Booch.
Uh, just, just for clarification, can an enterprise fund be created if there's not enough money to sustain it? So, I guess what I'm saying is if it costs us eight point five million dollars to, to subsidize solid waste with an enterprise fund, if we're only raising five million, can we do an enterprise fund?
I mean, we can do an enterprise fund, but then the general fund would still be doing a transfer for the remaining amount that it needs to operate.
And that, and that price is going to go up as well, uh, Councilman, over time.
Right.
Due to the, you know, the la, you know, labor costs, healthcare costs, you name it. So, that price will continue to go up. So, uh, you know, uh, Ms. Fields has provided a document to show the level in an enterprise fund that would be sustainable so that we can get this over with, uh, we can get the, the amount over with upfront so that we won't have to continue to transfer or go back to the people of Shreveport and ask them for more money in the future. And in that enterprise fund, that level of investment is at fifteen dollars.
Yeah, I, I remember that. I was just curious if this could even be something that was, that was voted on if we weren't to a level that, uh, if we, let's say we, we do, um, approve Councilman Green's proposal, we could still have it in an enterprise fund.
The legislation that's on the table for the seven dollars puts it in the general fund.
Okay. Okay.
Councilman Nicholson.
When I initially proposed a solid waste enterprise fund, I was under the impression that a fee necessary to sustain that fund on an ongoing basis was a requirement. Uh, I've been advised by the city attorney's office that while it is preferable for an enterprise fund to be self-sustaining year to year, it is not required. Uh, and my hope is that the council ultimately will approve a fee sufficient to fund solid waste so that the general fund does not have to transfer money into the enterprise fund that I have proposed. But in any event, I, I think this discussion should be delayed two weeks and that's the basis of my motion.
All right. Councilman Green.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, also, Councilman Nicholson, the reason that the legislation say general fund is because we don't have no other fund to put it in.
That's right, we haven't created the fund that we're talking about yet, have we?
So, therefore, we don't have no other choice but to have it where it is.
Certainly.
Thank you.
At some point, I thought you had a, a number, a figure attached to the, to your, to the enterprise fund development. It's not there anymore?
Councilman Bradford, I had a separate ordinance or perhaps two that would have set a thirteen-dollar fee. But my conversations with my colleagues on the council indicated that that was not going to pass when it was up for, uh, consideration. And so, I, I withdrew that ordinance. But if, should the council change its mind, I'll be happy to put it back on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so the motion, uh, by Councilman Nicholson and second by Councilman Green was to postpone.
Yes.
There's no other discussion on that? Please vote. That motion carries with seven.
Uh, ordinance eighteen, amends ordinance number ninety-four of twenty-eighteen, the twenty-nineteen risk, uh, retained risk fund budget.
All right.
Okay. Well, we, to, to, to do the discussion, I moved that, I moved that we adopted for discussion, then we go to discussion.
Go ahead.
I second.
The move by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Flair. There's no, well, Councilman Nicholson, discussion.
What is the motion on the floor? I'm sorry.
The motion was to, to adopt.
I will say briefly before we- I will say briefly, before we vote on the motion, uh, that I, I am confident that everybody around the horseshoe here is committed to seeing that every expenditure that the city makes with its money, whether it's to buy insurance or some other good or service, is spent in a manner that is in the best interest of the citizens. Uh, we all are obliged always to act in the interest of the people that, that hired us and put us here. Uh, this ordinance is a, in my view, a, a good first step, uh, to ensuring that the council has the level of involvement that the charter contemplates in the purchase of insurance on an annual basis. Thank you.
And. Councilman Bradford.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, I got a call, I've, I got several calls, but specifically, I got a call from a former city council person. And, and, and they, they said, why is it that every time, um, there seem to be a progressive approach to governing when it involves African-Americans that there wanna be a, be a change in policy or to weaken the power of an individual? And I said, well, like, give me an example. And they gave me a couple of examples. Now, um, I'm gonna support this motion not because of, not, not, not because of, uh, the reason I think that Councilman Nicholson said, even though it's a good reason, but I think the mayor's statement two weeks ago set a new standard. And I wanna, I want RFPs to go out for major, uh, major contracts and, 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 and things because I wanna see fair share included. Mayor, I, I wanna see if, if indeed we can finally, uh, live up to a twenty-year, a twenty-year ordinance. And that is that we would have a goal, uh, that we can meet a goal, a sufficient, a sufficient goal. And I think we can do that by saying, in your, in your proposals, give me a level of fair share participation. And, 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 uh, that would be my reason for, for scrutinizing RFPs. But, uh, and again, it's nothing illegal. It's just that it's a goal. If it's not, if, if it's not available, then it's not available. But I think, I think when, when the mayor said that we, he, he thought that this was a good move because, because it, it would be more inclusive. And I, 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 I sit back because, I mean, I couldn't argue with that. But at the same time, I want it not to be limited to this, just this, this incident. I want it to be, I want it to be a new, a new standard for Shreveport. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mayor Perkins.
I just wanna make a, a statement really quick. I, I do understand the concern of my teammates, the council, uh, with our, with my switch of some of our insurance policies. I completely understand it. Um, and I'll go, I've prepared a statement, but before I go into the statement, I'll say legally, we made sure we were, uh, it was legally permissible. As a matter of fact, it was a higher legal standard than what we've done in the past because we still are going to RFP, uh, the insurance going forward, uh, in accordance with state bid laws. Uh, ethically, everything that we did was above board as well in accordance with Louisiana ethics laws. Uh, but I do understand sometimes there is a higher standard, uh, for me in office. And I told the people of Shreveport that I would be better. So, I completely understand that. So, this message addresses the, a bit of the perception of it to lay out some of the facts, uh, in front of me. Um, I realize when I made the change, everything moved pretty quickly and this caused some unease with some of our council members. I take full responsibility for that, uh, as this was not my intent. Uh, in an effort to hit the ground running, I made the decision to immediately change the agent of record. I wanted to begin saving taxpayers' money as quickly as possible. Uh, the city had not bid these policies out for decades. After speaking with the industry experts, I concluded that we would save taxpayers' money by switching agents of record. This analysis have, has proved true, uh, as our new agent has already saved Shreveport eighty-eight thousand in fees and premiums. When you compare their fees and premiums versus the older. The agent anticipates approximately sixty thousand in additional savings by April. So, I'll give the council a report in April as well on this matter. Uh, in short, this decision will save the city as much as a hundred and forty-eight thousand. This is the sort of positive change I promised during the campaign. Shreveport pays twenty-six million in insurance premiums every year. The new agent acquired only twelve percent of that business, whereas one of the previous brokers, Gallagher, retained eighty-eight percent of the city's insurance business or just over twenty-three million dollars. There has been no minority participation in Shreveport insurance contracts for decades, though the twelve percent awarded to the new broker falls far short of our twenty-five percent goal. Uh, it is a significant improvement. I decided to transfer, transfer a portion of Shreveport's insurance policies to a new agent to save money and introduce competition and fairness to the process. My intentions were conveyed by one of my team members to the city risk manager during the transition. The plan was for the decision to be executed after my inauguration. However, the policies were discontinued one day prior. I'm not interested in the politics of division. I'm focused on the business of Shreveport. I'm interested in what we can do to make Shreveport a safer and more prosperous city. And I welcome any input, um, from the city council or our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, let me ask the mayor a question, Mr. Chairman. Okay, well, I was gonna address it to the mayor, but, uh, this Green is on the board.
Councilman Green.
Thank you. Uh, I, I'd just like to say, uh, about this legislation, at this particular time, I wouldn't be able to support it because I just think that at this particular time in the stage that we're in, the mayor should have free range as other mayors had before him. And so, therefore, I just can't, I know there's one issue before us, but we hadn't been in office, but not even two months. And I just think at this point in time, the mayor should have whatever free range his previous predecessors had. And that's just how I feel. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I, I have to agree with Councilman Green. I, I couldn't support this at this particular time, uh, strictly because if, 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 if it was me and I was mayor and I just came into a new administration, um, things happen. Maybe there was a one-day mistake that was happening. Maybe that, other things that may have happened, I have no knowledge of. So, at this particular point, until there's a, I think there's a thorough, there's some thorough, um, looking into, if that makes sense, I hate to use the word investigation, but there's a thorough in, looking into going on. And at least until after I get some feedback from that, uh, I couldn't support, um, that at this particular time. I would like to keep my provisions of power if it was me coming into a new administration at this particular time. Councilman Nicholson.
In light of the comments of my colleagues, I want to articulate my specific concerns and I will do so by giving a reprise of the Audit and Finance Committee meeting that we had yesterday. Uh, before Mayor Perkins was sworn in on the twenty-ninth, two policies, an excess workers' compensation policy and an inland marine policy, uh, for which Risk Services of Louisiana had already bound coverage on the tenth of December, were changed to a different agent of record. Making that change saved the city no money whatsoever. The amount of the premiums paid for both those policies was fixed because they were already bound. Evelyn Kelly, our risk manager, uh, at the direction of Shenereka Fleming's, the mayor's special advisor, worked over the Christmas holiday to ensure that the agent of record change happened before January first, twenty-nineteen, the date on which the policies went into effect. Based on the email correspondence I have seen, the only explanation for making that change of the agent of record before January first was to ensure that the commissions paid on those two policies, which totaled approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars, were paid to the new agent of record rather than to Risk Services of Louisiana, which had done all the work necessary to negotiate and bind those policies. The new agent of record, Third Millennium, is a New Orleans corporation. The new agent of record is affiliated, uh, with Rodrell Sykes, who is a Shreveporter. Uh, I've been advised that Mr. Sykes is a former business partner of Joshua Williams, who ran the mayor's campaign. I've been further advised that Mr. Sykes is a first cousin of Joshua Williams, who ran the mayor's campaign. I want to make clear for the public and for my colleagues that I fully support giving everyone, regardless of their background, the opportunity to participate in the city's business, including insurance business. But as a member of the council, I have very serious concerns about the fact that hundreds of thousands of dollars of commissions were moved, uh, to the first cousin of the individual who ran the mayor's campaign. I can't believe that anybody in this room or anybody sitting with me up here on the podium thinks that that is okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Point of order.
Count, point of order.
I, I do not, uh, condone the fact that these policies have not been bid. Uh, we haven't changed agents for thirty years, but what happened before is not an excuse to continue doing that in the future. We need a fair, transparent process for selecting the people that serve our city. Uh, and that includes insurance on which we spend millions of dollars a year. I, I am not interested in four years of division. I look forward to working with the mayor. I'm committed to doing that because his success is our success. But in my view, what happened with these policies with Risk Services was not acceptable and that is, in part, my motivation for introducing this ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Fuller.
I agree with Councilman Bradford's rationale for wanting to move forward with this. Um, in part because, like you said, if we want to see fair shares succeed, we have to have, if we want to see parity and equity in our, in our contracts, we have to have transparency and consistency. That's first. And then I want to say that on the day that we got sworn in, I said that what we've done in the past quite often has been archaic and it's time for us to move past it. Whether it's twenty years, thirty years, or ten years, we should probably be rebuking a lot of the bad practices that have come before us. And though there is no better time to start that than right now. I'm not gonna worry about the thirty years of contracts that, that we've, we've seen go by. I'm not even, I'm not gonna shed a tear for the lost business of them when they're still holding on to millions in some cases. But if we're gonna move forward after running every single one of us on transparency, including the mayor, then this is our opportunity to prove that that's what we're here for. And to be able to go back in a year and look at the contracts again and look at our fair share stats and see if we actually did what we said we were gonna do and if everyone had the same opportunity. That's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Mayor Perkins.
Uh, I just want to say again, Councilman, I, I respect your concern for this matter. Um, the, the relationship that you brought up, uh, is, has nothing to do with his ability to do the job, just like I wouldn't bring up the fact that I've heard that you have a personal relationship with Mr. Eppers. Uh, we have to give people opportu, no, and, and I don't mean, I'm just saying, we have to give people opportunities and create a fair market. That's the only thing that I have purveyed that we are trying to accomplish. And as far as the fees are concerned, there has been immediate savings. The, the fees are different. Something that did come to mind, uh, that I've, that I've found out a couple, I think, two days ago at this point, is that the services you say they render the city, apparently, they send an invoice to the city on December the eleventh. And remember, I'm working from very thin paperwork on the relationship prior to with these services. Apparently, they send an invoice to the city on December eleventh. I had no control whatsoever on whether or not they were paid for their services. That is illegal. So, if we find out that they rendered services that we never paid them for, we will pay those, for those services. And that, I just want to make sure that's on the record.
Councilman Booch.
Mayor, I'm glad to hear you say that. Um, I don't want anybody, black, white, orange, yellow, purple, whatever color, not to be paid for, for the work that they've done. Um, I believe in fair share one hundred percent. Um, I believe, though, that, um, like I said earlier about going to Mendon, we may go different routes about it and there's nothing wrong with that. My problem with this whole deal has absolutely nothing to do with, um, how much money Eppers Risk Services has made or Gallagher has made over these years. That's something that, I'll be honest, when this contract started, I was in the eighth grade. Ollie Tyler was my assistant principal at Yuri Drive Middle School. I could've cared less who our insurance was with, okay? Now, I'm elected to make sure that our interests are protected. My problem is, everybody's sitting out here that's saying everything, if it were your home and you were insuring it, would you do it in four days? Would you get, would you, but no, but would you want to go out and make sure that you're getting the same insurance that you had prior? We're talking about several million dollars worth of insurance here that was moved and that's what my concern is. I wish, and I wish that we had a time machine or a genie that we could go back in time and have had this happen a different way. Maybe, um, said, hey, listen, for the first three, four months I'm in office, I'm gonna try to get RFPs, I'm gonna talk to everybody I can. I wish we could've done that. I am concerned that, um, Third Millennial has one million dollars in errors and emissions insurance as opposed to our current, our former carrier had seventy million, seven zero. They're writing a two-hundred-and-ninety-nine million dollar policy at the airport. If there is an error in a mission, which means if, not anything fraudulent, but if there were an error or a mission on this pol, this new policy, where would the money come from? Let's say, God forbid, we have a plane crash at the airport and there was an error in a mission on this policy and we have a two-hundred-million-dollar claim and we find out that there was an error in a mission on this policy, all this new company would have would be one million dollars to cover that error in the mission. That's a critical issue to me, especially whenever we're sitting up here debating on how we're gonna pay a seven-dollar trash fee in order to get, um, the money that we need in reserve. It's, it's, it's a critical business issue. I have said all along, this is most likely a sidestep. It was, it was a mistake. I wish we could go back, put a plan in order. I think that this ordinance not only kinda helps with that plan, I don't think that it takes any of the, of the mayor's, um, authority away from him. It just makes sure that there may be a check imbalance in place. And that's, that's why I will be supporting this. But my, my, my dislike for this whole thing is basically putting the city of Shreveport in any undue liability that could've possibly happened. And I just want to make sure, you know, uh, I'm insured with State Farm. That's not a plug to State Farm. Uh, but I would hope that a new company that I went with would have the same financial background and the same experience that a State Farmer and Allstate had. And from what I'm seeing, um, I don't see that with this company. And, and that is a concern to me. But I, I want, I want everybody, and I want to go on record saying this, I believe that by God, we gotta right the wrongs that happened thirty to twenty years ago. Whatever happened, it's time to open it up. It's time for us to, and I'm for whoever can do the best job. That's, that's what I'm trying to do. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right. I did want to say, and, and I'm going to Councilman Nicholson, but the seventy million, from my understanding, was for the hundred-and-thirty-five different, uh, people that they have that they're, um, covering. So, I just wanted to go on record.
Hundred-and-thirty-five.
Hundred-and-thirty-five different offices that, uh, that they cover. So, it's, it's not, it's not the. For the hundred-and-thirty-five different offices that they have. I just wanted to go on record and say that, because that's, that's, I just wanted to put that out on record.
And it's not a requirement, sorry to jump my turn, Chairman, it's not a requirement as well. Um, I've spoken to the city of New Orleans. They, uh, are, they, they're using Third Millennial right now with, um, their airport and the state only, the state has no requirement, but New Orleans' requirement is only one million dollars and Third, Third Millennial meets that. So, it's an excessive bar to be talking, to be comparing the one million versus seventy million.
I was told yesterday in the, in the Finance Committee meeting that the state of Louisiana and RFPs required twenty million.
We called the secretary today. So, you could, you can confirm that with the Secretary of Insurance for Louisiana.
All right. Councilman Nicholson. All right. Councilman Green.
Mr. Chair, I, I'd just like to say this. Yes, that was possibly done in a wrong manner, but I don't think that we ought to put ordinance eighteen on the mayor to say, okay, because this happened, we're going to somewhat punish you that it won't happen again. I just think if we're gonna talk about insurance, then we ought to talk about insurance. I think if we're gonna say this was not, it's kinda like the way in which things are done is sometimes more important than the thing itself. I think we ought to deal with the insurance and not with an ordinance. I think when, if there come a time for an ordinance after we've had this discussion and then we've said. and then we've said to the mayor, well, Mayor, this was like this, or whatever, whatever, we would hope that this would not happen again. Then we move forward. Then if it happens again, then we come up with Ordinance Eighteen. But at this point in time, we're dealing with an ordinance and we're dealing with insurance, which is unfair to the administration and to the mayor. I just think, since we talk about apples and apples and oranges and oranges, I think we ought to just let apples be apples, bananas be bananas, and say to the mayor, okay, Mayor, this is what happened. Possibly it doesn't smell good, but we just rolling on and we're not going to put Ordinance Eighteen in your face that you would have to get up every morning and think about Ordinance Eighteen. What if the citizens would come and say to us, because we hadn't got their street fixed or their ditch cleaned, that they would like for us to do legislation on ourselves? It's easy to point the finger at somebody else, but you also have fingers back at you. I'm not perfect. I've been here for too much, just like everybody else. I just wouldn't want to be over there at this point in time when we're dealing with insurance and then ordinance. I don't have a problem with the ordinance if this was like the fifth, sixth, or seventh, or eighth time, but just starting out, I don't think it's fair to the administration. And of course, Councilman Nichols, I understand you, what you was putting forward. But I just think at this particular time, it's just not time for that. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Fuller.
For the remainder of the evening, I would like to stay away from two things, fruit and feelings. This is not about fair. This is about being objective. And if we are going to implement consistency, we can start now. We're not implementing this ordinance, this legislation, as a slap on the wrist. What we're saying is, for the last thirty-something years, we've been doing something that's not right and we can't afford to move forward like that anymore. That is what we're talking about. We are being objective. We are not trying to hurt the mayor's feelings. That is not what this is about. This is not about fair. It's about how we move forward as a community. And we need to be consistent. And the thing is, this is something that was already addressed in the Home Room Charter. Am I correct? The way that we originally were, the way that this was originally established was that in the charter, we actually had this. And then it got dialed back. So we're actually going back to the way we actually used to do something. The way that it was intended by our founders, I guess, or somebody that drafted it in there.
Mr. Grubbs in the audience. I guess we won't poll him.
Previous question, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
The previous question was if we was going to be at six-thirty?
It won't just be his fault this time, and he didn't even bring up a compliment sandwich.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion to postpone until after the thorough investigation or...
Second.
So what was your motion, Chair?
To postpone until the, until we have a thorough investigation and the feedback from the internal audit.
That's definite.
It's been moved.
They want to know what the motion was.
Motion is to postpone until we get a feedback from the internal audit on the thorough investigation before we go on this vote. Okay. It's been motion by the chair, second by Councilman Green, to postpone. Please vote. Motion fails five to two.
Previous question.
Original motion by Councilman Nicholson. And it was, make sure I get it right. The motion was to adopt.
To adopt.
Number eighteen.
Ordinance number eighteen.
Ordinance number eighteen, motion by Councilman Nicholson.
Motion by Councilman Bradford.
Motion by Bradford and second by Flory. I lost time and everything in the other day.
Getting late in the evening.
All right. If there's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries five to two.
Kind of like at church.
At the church. Late evening. There is no table legislation to be removed, am I correct, Mr. Thompson?
That's correct.
Okay, we have no property standards appeals, no other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
That's correct.
Or the end reports from officers' boards or committees. I would say that we did have a property standard meeting today and we looked into holding rental property owners accountable for evictions and things of that force to keep their property in line, whether they initiate the eviction or just to move out.
Just real quick for the administration. Have we, Deputy Carl Richard provided us with some information about, and this may be a legal question, Mr. Yan, about possibly going up on our eviction rate? Has there been any discussion about that with the Marshal's Office?
I haven't had any conversation.
We talked about that in the Finance Committee meeting, the previous, and he brought up scale of... Does that require legislation or can the council do something with that?
I would have to look back at that, but from what I'm remembering, and I think some of the fees that he discussed, specifically the judges set those fees and not the council.
Okay. Well, I think that where I was going with that, Mayor, I don't know if you were in that meeting or not, but like Bossier City's charging, I want to say like a hundred and, I don't have the number in front of me, like a hundred and thirty.
It's one-fifty.
One-fifty for an eviction. What we had talked about is going up to a similar rate on evictions that, that the property owner would have to, for a filing fee. And in that, there could be a cleanup fee where we don't have these huge amounts of trash sitting out there that we could put into solid waste. According to the Marshal's Office, they do sixty-six-hundred evictions a year. So if you multiply an extra seventy-five dollars times sixty-six-hundred, that's a pretty good amount of money that could go and help supplement a solid waste fund. So I would like, I would like to see the, the city attorney's office look into that and see which direction we'd like to go, because I would be willing to author some legislation in order to get those fees up to kind of help. Because, I mean, you write to, especially District B in the Highland area, when they do an eviction, it's disgusting, all the, all the trash out there.
It's true, but you didn't have to call us out like that.
Sorry. Well, okay, okay, and District D, it's horrible.
That was part of the discussion today, and we did talk about doing that also. Attorney's Office did speak on that, and they're looking, doing some research.
Good. I mean, I think that that's part of this whole process that we're talking about is, let's look at these fees that we're maybe not collecting that we probably should have been if we're going to start comparing ourselves to Bossier paying this much, or Lafayette, or wherever. Then I think we ought to do a whole comprehensive look into that. And if we're, if we're charging the same thing we were in the eighties, then we're not doing our, our job. So I'd be happy to author any legislation or help the administration with that in any way I can.
All right. Mr. Thompson. The clerk's report.
The mayor made certain appointments. You heard from two of them today, Ms. Fields and Ms. Roan. You did not hear from Herman Hill. He was appointed to Fields' Operations Superintendent. So I understand you'll be at the next meeting.
Okay. Mayor Perkins, do you have any additional comments?
No comments, Chair.
All right. Is there any other council member? Attorney Strand.
Okay. So I just was consulting with the city attorney. And so we just wanted to, to say that, you know, quite possibly, there's a, what, the types of fees that you're talking about can, some fees may, can be instituted by the council and other fees may be set by the judges. And so that, that is definitely something that we would like to get with the CAO on to look at what, what is what and who can change what fees.
I'm not sure that this falls under the direction of the Public Safety Committee, but whenever we call a meeting, maybe we could get some answers on that. I would say that evictions may fall under public safety a little bit. So maybe we could have some direction at that point. And I plan on calling a public safety meeting probably in the next week or two.
Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Fuller.
There's a planning and infrastructure meeting at four o'clock on, I think, is it March fourth?
March fifth. March.
March fifth? You're hired, Mr. Kraft. March fifth.
At four.
At four o'clock.
All right.
Isn't it on the third floor?
On the third floor. We're going to be in the engineering conference room because we're going to get a report from the city engineer, Patrick Ferrell.
Is that it from council members? If so, then we have further comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll first acknowledge that Cedric Murphy submitted a written statement. He frequently makes constructive remarks before the council, but he's not present. He has to be acknowledged, and I'm doing that now. Lauren Rae Anderson is our first commenter, if she's present.
She was. I think she's, I think she's...
She's over in the corner.
Ms. Anderson.
While she's on the way, I just want to state that, yes, Cedric Murphy does make it here. But today, due to the weather, he stated that he was not able to come down. But I want to let him know that we did receive his request to speak.
Hi. Lauren Anderson, two forty-seven East Lister Street. Two things, sorry, I'm a little sick right now, I got allergies. Since these meetings can go on a little while, like, can we order pizza? It's a legitimate question. Yeah, I'll order pizza for myself. I mean, I'll share what I have, but, you know. They go, they go on for a little while, you know, and I think it would be good to encourage people to stick around because a lot of people do want to go home and eat or be with their families. The second thing, regarding the property, property standards issue, whenever y'all are addressing how to get people in compliance, please keep it a civil matter. So we have civil and then we have criminal. I was reading something online that there was a property standards citation issued. The person didn't show up for court and then a warrant was issued. AKA, somebody was thrown in jail for not maintaining his private property. Somebody engaged in a victimless crime and was thrown in jail, which is a very dehumanizing experience. So whenever you're, one suggestion that I have for dealing with property standards, whenever you issue a citation, it's going to give a person notice to show up to court. If they don't show up, you get a default judgment. You take that default judgment, put a lien on the property. Once the liens accrue, you issue a writ of execution. The city takes that property and then hopefully sells it to somebody who can take care of the property. Any questions?
I have a, I have a question real quick. You had mentioned at one point that you would like to see these meetings, I believe it was you and maybe Mr. Carson, these meetings pushed back later where more people could participate?
I mean, if possible. I mean, I'm here.
Mr. Thompson, what, well, he's gone. Oh, well. Can, can we, could we possibly have a later meeting once a month? I mean, Mr. Chairman, would that be something possible?
I think the rea- the, the charter states, and I have to be for sure. But I think the charter states that we have to...
In the charter it states that we are going to change the time of the meeting. We should have done on the day we were sworn in.
Yeah. Okay.
On swearing-in day. But we were too busy thinking about going to eat at...
I just think that from, from the comments I've gotten from several people and that, that it would be nice if we did like a five-thirty meeting, even if it was once. I know, don't, don't... That's going to cut out in the, that's going to cut out in the situation deal, huh? But, you know, it would be nice. I hear that from a lot of people. And I know, Mayor, I know that your staff probably wouldn't want to stay after five-thirty, but it's just something I thought I would at least bring up.
Councilman, while you bring that up, is it, Chair, maybe you have the answer. Councilwoman Fuller, maybe you have the answer. Could we change potential locations and do them in the community?
I would love to see us do that.
I don't know if we had to decide that on day one, too, but...
I don't know if we have to decide that on day one, but it's, I mean, it's something we could try to do. We have to. The city has facilities in other parts of the community.
I don't think we have it, but Attorney Strand wants to speak on that. And I'm, I'm in favor of doing a town hall, community in different districts, something like that. But go ahead, Attorney Strand.
Definitely, the city council could call special meetings and, and at that special meeting, change, and the location could be at your leisure.
And I guess probably on the agenda for those type of special meetings, there would really not have to be anything other than an update from the mayor, an update from the city council, and then possibly some public comments. Is that maybe not to do business like we're doing here? Because it would be kind of impractical to do the business that we're doing here somewhere else. But having maybe a once-a-quarter meeting somewhere in the... I know, we're getting into advice, but I just think that might not be a bad idea.
Central location, huh?
Right. Maybe, maybe have one in, in District K one month, one in B, one in C, one in D, you know, kind of move them.
We're going to be doing Big Block of Cheese Day in District B. Like on West Wing, where we like get to have like, where everyone just comes and talks to me. Like, schedule meetings like a full eight-hour day. I'm looking for my location right now.
I mean, just, just if we was to do it, say, in a central, we'd do it at Southern University or Centenary.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so, insimation. Can we order pizza, yes or no?
No.
And then finally, don't lock up people for not taking care of their personal private property.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
If we do have those kind of meetings, y'all welcome to use my car as a mic.
All right. We'll do that.
Dorian Ford.
I think Dorian left. I saw her leave out. Yeah.
Lester Smith.
Somebody could remind them about those seven and eight o'clock meetings.
I think they know that.
They know it, okay.
You get closer and closer to them every week.
Mr. Smith, good evening. Would you state your name and address, please?
Good afternoon. Lester Smith, forty-one forty-eight Theo Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seventy-nine oh nine. I'm going to speak on an issue pertains to an incident that happened in the Moretown area a few weeks ago. Young man, African-American man, was shot and killed by a Shreveport police officer. And I'm just, I'm concerned because we have not heard anything from city officials. I contacted the mayor's office and I have to give Crystal kudos because she did reach out to the chief secretary. She called me and said that the chief would be reaching out to me. I've yet to get that phone call or whatever the definition of reaching out meant by her. But I have this family with me and I want to say, we lost an officer a month or so ago. And I know the city came out in full force with condolences and to sharing that loss with that family. This young man served our country in the military. He had some issues, not criminal issues, he had some medical issues, which a lot of our veterans come back with. He served in Afghanistan. So, and it bothers me that no government official in this city has had any compassion in their heart to call this family and say, you, you have sympathy or condolences or whatever for the loss of your loved one. Now, if we're going to, when it's one of our own, we blow the flag at half-staff, beat the drums, we should do it for an individual that's taken by one that represents this city. Because first of all, there are too many black men, not only in this city, in this country, dying at the hands of police officers. And there has not been a conviction in this city of all the black men that's been killed. And I think it's time out for this kind of foolishness where these people can do what they do and hide behind a badge or a code of silence. We, the citizens of Shreveport, we're human beings. And you said it's justice for all and that no one is above the law. I beg to differ with you. If we've had ten homicides and not one conviction where a police officer is concerned, your convening of your grand jury, is something wrong with the convening of the grand jury? Is something wrong with that process? This family is here because they're hurting. And your condolences are reaching out to them. It's not going to bring that loved one back, but it shows that you're concerned. It, it, what it does for me, it says, though one of ours did this, we're sorry. You have our condolences. You have our sympathy, whatever. These people, they don't know nothing and nobody will even talk to them. And it shouldn't be secrecy. If it's a murder, it should be tried in a court, not, not in the court of public opinion. And we got to stop hiding behind these badges and these codes. And peoples are hurting and families are being tore up by what police officers are darned whose duty is to serve and protect. And you all need to look at this thing and do something about this. Mr. Mayor, I know this is your first rodeo and I, you know, I called your office and I asked, you know, and I know you, peoples are pulling at you from every direction. First, I want to give you kudos for the, what you did a little while ago with the insurance company. I stand with you wholeheartedly. I got your back. And secondly, y'all owe these people something. You, y'all, y'all owe these people something. These people have buried their loved one and still no one has contacted them. These people have buried their loved one, and still, no one has contacted them. Nobody.
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 We had money to bury him or not.
Okay, I had Attorney Strand first, please?
No, Chair, I'm sorry, that was previous.
Councilman Green?
Thank you. Please, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
I wanna say something. I'm right in the district.
No, you're in District L. You're in District L.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is...
Nobody came and said, "Right around the corner."
You're the aunt, right?
This grandmother, he was living with me.
No, I saw you on TV.
Right around the corner. We go to church every Sunday, we run around, we follow out, we stretch out. When it's time to be elected, somebody at our door every five minutes. I'm right around the corner, been around this corner almost fifty years in Far Souths. And my grandson, my grandson went to the store, never made that call, never made... No, don't know why he was stopped, don't know why he was shot, don't know if he had a what. Nothing. But when it's time to vote, you at the door every five minutes knocking on the door. Somebody could've came and said, "Miss Porter, I heard about your son."
Well, I'ma let Councilman Green speak, and I'm not cutting you out. I'm not cutting you out.
Nobody.
I'ma let Councilman Green speak.
But they go to church.
No, I agree, I'm agreeing with you.
They run around and church follow out, stretch out, everybody lies now. And I'm not running the race thing, because this child was on both sides. His mama was Caucasian, and his daddy was black. So we can't say it was a race thing, but everybody mattered. How in the world can you hold a office? And when we're all around, somebody's child been gunned down, and not even knock on the door and say, "I just have my daughter."
I understand. I came, let me say this, I came out...
We are a family that has been really treated bad. Nobody.
Every homicide that has happened in Shreveport, I went to each family or sent something to that family's home. When I came out to try to get the... I was sent to the wrong, I had the wrong address for you. Let me say that on my behalf, not my district, but that's just something that I do. Anybody can tell you that I've done that, but I was given the wrong address. You know that. So let me say that first of all.
I have to give you that, Chair.
Councilman Green.
Thank you. Of course, I've been talking in contact with the chief. In fact, as of yesterday, I had the chief to come up, because he had said to me that it was uninvestigation, and he didn't wanna talk about it, he couldn't talk about it. I brought him up on yesterday, he says the district attorney has it. Everybody that I've asked how to get in contact with you all, they did not know. I was on the scene when it, during the process of it, and I was reaching out to find out who. And all they said to me was that he stayed in the Illinois's apartment.
That was out.
I don't know, that's all I know. I went to the Illinois's apartment to find out.
You're true.
I could not find out any information. But the chief has been in contact, I've been in contact with him from day two. It was uninvestigation. At this point in time, it's in the district attorney's office, and there can be no statements made about... They can't even tell me. But on yesterday, the record will reflect that the chief came to that podium there, because I wanted information to reach out to the family, to reach out to the community. I said to the chief, whenever the information come down, whenever there was a press conference, I wanted to be involved as to being able to tell the people what happened and why it happened. That's all I can... I went to Illinois's apartment, I've searched over there, nobody could tell me nothing. I am so sorry that I did not know that it was you on Far Souths, I didn't know, and nobody had said anything to me. All they said was Illinois's apartment.
And I was given two addresses, Illinois's and on Mayfield, and neither one was the house of where he supposedly lives, is what I got, so, I just wanted to, let me say that, I go on record saying that I've always, every homicide, I've been to each person's family.
But, you know, I just wanna say in closing, it's a bad situation.
I agree.
These people, you know, needing some answers. And we spent a lot of money as taxpayers to provide our officers with all the equipment that they need. And to say that this officer, I didn't say this, they said he was in one of the most high-crime areas in the city, and you sent him out there without a body cam, with the dash cam not working. See, that tells me there's a lie somewhere, because what, the body cam not working and the dash cam is not working? Like, the fix is in. So what I'm saying, I'm asking you guys up there to demand justice for this family.
Councilman Green is pushing to get some kind of resolve on this, I do know that much, I can speak that.
And I've been talking with this family, I got in touch with them. You know, I followed up and got in, nobody contacted me, I got in touch with them. So, and I'm pretty much kind of, based on the daughter, she's given me kind of leeway to speak for the family, and on behalf of the family, we have some things scheduled for tomorrow where this is concerned. But we wanna see the dash cam, we wanna see the video cam, because there's no way he got, he's driving a car and in pursuit, and he don't have at least a dash cam on.
I agree. Councilman Green?
Thank you.
Give us some answers.
And also, Mr. Chair, I'd like to say to you, Mr. Smith, that just like you say to me when there's going to be a community meeting, a cleanup, I think it's also fair for you to come to me to say, "This is where this family live, and this is what this family need," more than you bringing the family without contacting me to say, "Look Pastor, as I contact you about community meetings, as I contact you about coming to Apple Park, here this family is, do you have any information?" And as I said, I've been pushing the chief as hard as I possibly can. At this point in time, he has no answers. At this point in time, ma'am, and to your family, I promise you, as your city councilman, as your representative, I will stand with you until you all have the knowledge. At this point in time, I just don't have it. It's in the district attorney's office, and nobody at this point in time can supersede them.
Okay, can I say something to you, Councilman Green? In order to have friends, you have to show yourself friendly, because I've tried to talk to you about things, and I haven't gotten anywhere, so, and I don't run, I don't kiss in behind people.
I'm allowing y'all to talk about that offline. Mayor Perkins?
I just...
Wait a minute, he left behind five children, a set of twins and three others. And nobody know whether we were able to bury him or not. Nobody put up a GoFundMe or nothing for him. He was military, and he had other problems, and he went off of this country. And the news came on, and somebody said the police did a heroic thing. That hurts. The officer that did the killing, pull his Facebook up, see what all he got, wrote on his Facebook. It's nothing heroic about taking a person's life. I'm not saying he was right, 'cause I don't know what happened, but all lives matter. His life mattered.
It does.
And I just, before I say anything, I'm sorry for your loss. I wanna say that, yes, Councilman Green has been on this relentlessly. We've exchanged multiple phone calls, emails on it, he's been on it. He's been talking to the police chief, who, because there's an investigation, we couldn't tell you much. I understand what you're saying about you want people to come, but personally, I don't know what it would do for the family had I been there and not have been able to give you all any information. So we're waiting till the investigation concludes, but no, again, from a personal standpoint, I'm grateful for our veterans and their service, and I'm mourning with your family right now.
It would have showed that you cared. It would've showed that you cared, and that's what it's about. That's what it's about. My brother lost his life...
And that's why I go to each one, 'cause I took it upon myself, 'cause I know all of us work, you know, have things going on. I took it upon, I take it upon myself to go to every victim of homicide. I go to everyone just myself as to represent the council, whether it's my district or not. And like I said, I was given two different addresses, one is the same as Councilman Green was given, and one on Mayfield, but neither one was the right one.
I'm not for sure, 'cause I was contacted, I don't live on neither of those addresses. So I'm not for sure how y'all go about doing it. But nobody was, none of us was contacted, but the night that he was murdered. They found my mom's address, they found grandmother's address, then, and so if a call would've been to the detective, he could've given someone the address to one of them.
Well, there's an investigation going on, so when that happens, they can't, they don't give out that information. I agree with you, if it was my family member, I feel the same way.
Yeah, 'cause that's why I want you each and every one of y'all to think about, what if it was your son, your grandson, your brother, what if it was you? You know, a lot of time, we think about things, just because we see it, we think it's a fraud, but what if it was your son, or your nephew, your grandson? And we have to think about that. I mean, I know that officers, they take an oath to protect and serve, but we all know that every apple on the tree ain't good. Every one of them is not good. And I'm all for the police department, I believe in the good one, we need them. But if we wanna bridge, make a bridge for the community and the police officer, this type of thing should not be happening. It should not be happening. These are the type of things that will cause people to be in fear of the police. And we need to have a bridge built to where the community can trust the police and not so far be scared of the police. And that's what's going on.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sammy Mears.
Real quick, I had something for the mayor.
He was on the board.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilman Bush.
Mayor, real quick, they brought up a very good point. Where are we, and do we have a number where we could expedite getting body cams for our officers? I think that it's a good idea for the officers and for the citizens to have body cams, and how can we expedite that, and can we find the money for that?
I agree with you, Councilman Busher, and that was in one of the first questions that I had for Chief Raymond as well, when, the first time that I spoke with him, even before I even took office. We are pretty far away from having one-hundred percent body cameras. I'll look at the policy, and I'll look at the numbers, and we'll get them back to you, but, you know, with... Yeah, I'll do that, we'll get the numbers back to you.
I know at one point last year, that the Caddo Parish Commission was willing to give us a hundred thousand dollars for law enforcement. I know that's not gonna get us anywhere close to what we need for body cams, but I would like for us to try to explore all avenues we can to, for all the first-line patrol officers to have body cams. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mears?
Okay, thank you. Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Department M one-ten, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. I don't know if all of you have ever seen this program years ago, but after watching two first episodes of Gomer Pyle, I could tell that Sergeant Carter was absolutely really out of it when he had to deal with the craziest knucklehead in the Marines. It all started the other day, I was watching, and when one Marine requested permission to enter the duty hut, he got it right. Gomer knocked on the door and said, "Hey, Sergeant Carter, sir, all right to come in? You don't do that," and he did. So apparently, he finally got it right, and the first sergeant said to Carter, "What a knucklehead." Carter said, "Now you know what, I have to deal with that one." And Carter said, "That is a knucklehead," in capital letters. When it was learned that Gomer also brought on a lady onto the base, and Carter smelled perfume, he was really mad at the boot camp people, and he said, "Get rid of that smell." Gomer went to knock on the door to talk to Sergeant Carter, but accidentally, when Carter came out, he hit him on the head by mistake. And he said, "Sergeant Carter, I like you, do you like me?" The most ridiculous thing I have ever heard. You don't ask a drill sergeant if they like you, the answer's a definite, "No." So, after Gomer was able to get the lady off of the base, Sergeant Carter was so mad, he made Gomer pile do fifty push-ups, and he told him, "If you ever do this again, I'll have you doing push-ups until you're an old man and can't walk." So he told him, "Get out of here." And that's when he ran out and bumped into another sergeant, saying, "Sorry, sir, aye aye, sir, bye, sir." And then when Sergeant Carter found out he had something left in his locker that Gomer left unattended to, he heard, "Pile." So, these were the first two episodes I saw of Gomer Pyle, and I know they're just old reruns, but nobody could be so stupid.
Fun fact, Sergeant Carter died in Shreveport.
Yes, he did.
Seriously.
Craig Lee.
Craig Lee, eleven twelve Prospect Street. Standing here in unison with the Anthony Childs family. On February the fifth, this young brother was murdered by Officer Travion Brooks, and I can conclude that he was murdered. We did our own investigation that particular next day, and from all accounts, this young man was stopped for no reason, and this was not the first time. This officer had been harassing him, hence why he ran, and that is what precipitated this situation. But I wanna give you some particular history. Myself and Councilman Bradford, in nineteen ninety-eight, we stood on the steps of the old city council building after having witnessed thirteen unarmed black men murdered by the Shreveport Police Department. That was in one year. And in two thousand and three, we're actually coming up on sixteen years since this international murder case of Marquis Huxford. He was murdered March the fifteenth, two thousand and three, shot about twenty times in the back by the Shreveport Police Department on the corner of Midway and Herm. This is yet another execution that happened, and the reason that the young brother ran was because he was trying to avoid conflict. Now, I've spoken to Ronnie Hampton, that particular street, my aunt has a home. Reverend Terrence Tramell's mother is on that street, and Reverend Ronnie Hampton lives on that street. Ironically, he called me once he saw the video and my news interview, and come to find out, the same officer, Mayor, the same officer had brutalized him downtown Shreveport. This guy's been on the force for just a little bit over a year and a half. Just a little bit over a year and a half, and he has a pattern and practice of intimidating black folks. There's a term that you can research during slavery, it's called meritorious manumission. And these were Negroes who would do the bidding for their white masters. They would snitch on people who were trying to escape, they would help brutalize them. And this is what basically this officer is rolling with. But there are two things that this situation is going to echo. The need for, as we've been pushing for the past twenty years, a citizens' review committee, and some serious cultural sensitivity and cultural diversity training, because here's what's going on. These officers, who are constantly talking about they wanna pay raise, constantly talking about they wanting to pay raise, they're costing the city of Shreveport millions of dollars in lawsuits. And this has been pattern and practice for a long period of time. So it is time out for the cover-up. We definitely want the dash cam, as Lester said, this guy did not even have body camera on, and from what we've been told by a couple eyewitnesses, this guy jumped the curve, almost ran the guy over, and shot him in the back after telling him to stop climbing the fence. This guy was never a threat, and as they've stated, he is a United States Army veteran. I took it out of my schedule to go to Plain Dillon a few weeks ago for his funeral, and come to find out, Willie, he is the cousin of our good friend Deborah Coleman. That's Deborah Coleman's aunt, his grandmother, that's his aunt. So we need to get to the bottom of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Revillainus Mays, I apologize if I've mispronounced your first name. Ms. Mays, or Mr. Mays? Ms. Beverly Ashton. Okay, thank you. Mr. Kraft, you are the final speaker of the evening.
No pressure.
Kenneth Kraft, never any pressure. One fifty-seven Archer, Shreveport, seven eleven oh five. And I heard apples and oranges and bananas, so we're gonna need to get you an ABO card. But this is my request to get about three and a half minutes, and thank you for doing Keith Hanson the request to speak for him, it's very helpful, and when you get here at five-ten, you don't need to feed the meter. But I'm gonna do the first paragraph and the last forty percent of "I Have a Dream." And please, teach your kids, your grandkids, these important words from August twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-three, in front of the Lincoln Memorial, by Reverend King. "I'm happy to join with you today in what will go down in history as the greatest demonstration for freedom in the history of our nation now go way forward. And so, even though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day, this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all manner created equal..." We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. I have a dream that one day, on the red hills of Georgia, the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners, we'll be able to sit down together at the table of justice. I have a dream that one day that even the state of Mississippi, a state sweltering with the heat of injustice, sweltering with the heat of oppression, will be transformed into an oasis of peace and justice. I have a dream that my four little children will live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream today. I have a dream that one day, down in Alabama, with its vicious racist, with its governor, with the words interposition and nullification, one day, right there in Alabama, little black boys and little black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and little white girls. Sisters and brothers, I have a dream today. I have a dream that one day, every valley shall be exalted, every mountain and hill shall be made low, the rough places will be made plain and the crooked places will be made straight. And the glory of God shall be revealed. And all flesh shall see it together. I have a dream today. This is our hope and this is the faith that I will go back to the South with. With this faith, we will be able to hew out of the mountain of despair a stone of hope. With this faith, we will be able to transform the jingling discords of our nation into a beautiful symphony of brotherhood. With this faith, we will be able to work together, to pray together, to struggle together, to stand up for freedom together, to go to jail together, knowing that we will be free someday. And this will be the day when we'll be able to sing, my country tis of thee, sweet land of liberty, of thee I sing. Land where my fathers died, land of the pilgrims pride, firmly in mountainside, let freedom ring. And if America is to become a great nation, this must become true. And so, let freedom ring from the prodigious hilltops of New Hampshire. Let freedom ring from the mighty mountains of New York. Let freedom ring from the heightening Alleghanies of Pennsylvania. Let freedom ring from the snow-capped Rockies of Colorado. Let freedom ring from the curvaceous slopes of California. But not only that, let freedom ring from Stone Mountain of Georgia. Let freedom ring from Lookout Mountain of Tennessee. Let freedom ring from every hill and molehill of Mississippi, from every mountainside, let freedom ring. And when this day comes, and when we allow freedom ring, we will let it ring from every village and every hamlet, from every city and every state. And we will be able to speed up that day when all of God's children, black men and white men, Jews and Gentiles, Protestants and Catholics, will be able to join hands and sing together, in the words of the old Negro spiritual, free at last, free at last, thank God almighty, we are free at last. Thank you.
There are no further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, um, I just, I got several texts, it's not the first time. I'm getting reports that our, our telecast and live streaming is, is, is not, it's not good, it's interruptions and, so if IT or whoever is responsible can address that issue, our citizens are not, are not getting a good, um, reception of what we're doing here on this council. Okay? So I would like to refer that to the proper department.
IT, okay. Councilwoman Fuller. I'm sorry. No, I was just gonna say, yeah, we'll look into it, but also a secondary on Facebook, City of Shreveport streams it as well, so it's two sources. But we'll, we'll fix the primary feed as well.
Okay, cuz, cuz I think I got this from Ms. Jones, if she don't have, uh, a Facebook page.
Okay, yep, well, like I said, we'll fix the primary.
Not you, Miss Jones. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller.
That was cool, Mr. Krap, thank you for that. I think that if we start having quarterly meetings in the different districts, that you should get to come and like give us an oratory so that people can actually like hear some of the words, some of our historic orations. I think you know quite.
Forty-five minutes.
You can't do that one.
No.
But I think you probably know a few more than that and it might be cool because you get into it.
Is that it? Mayor Perkins, anything else?
No remarks, Chairman.
If that's it from, um, everyone here, uh, today's been a day and this meeting is adjourned.
Six twenty. We're getting better.